I'm heading to call the order, this meeting, first meeting in the City and Nashua Plan Board, for the specific discussion and presentation of the master plan. Can we just get a roll call vote on the rule, please?
Yes. Mayor Donches, Mike Peterson, Scott Leclair.
Here.
Adam Varley.
Here.
Maggie Harper, here. Alderman David Tenza, Alderman Jan Schmidt, Dan Hudson.
Present.
Ed Weber, Bob Ballinger.
Here.
Larry Hirsch.
Here.
And Mark Mead.
Here.
Okay, so first up, we have a presentation from Director Marshall on the master plan.
Good evening. I'm going to take this off right here if everybody's okay, just so you can hear me enough. I'll put it back on before I return to the audience. Thank you all for having me here this evening. I appreciate you all coming early. I know you are very busy and you have a lot on your plates, so appreciate the extra half hour of your time. The goal tonight, I just have a couple slides to run through, is to make sure that you've all had the opportunity to see the draft master plan, which is right up as soon as you go to imagine.nashuanh.gov, to our website. It is available there. I was just going to go through it a little bit in the hopes that we can have a discussion about it before a public hearing, and if you have any questions, that we can talk about those now. So, brief agenda, we're going to go through the design and how it's laid out, how that hopefully makes it a bit more consumable, because there's a lot of information there. We're going to talk about some of the target metrics, the actions recommendations, how those work, and timeframe next steps, and then questions, discussions. Again, I only have, I think, eight slides. Please ask questions at any point in time. I'm not here to bore you for this half an hour. So, how did we get here? I think one of the most important things to say is we got here by speaking with all of you and by so many different community members in a lot of different ways. We did this in COVID and we made a very specific decision to move forward in COVID, because what better time to be really thinking about the future of your community than when you're in a pretty massive crisis and pandemic, so we can come out ready for the future and stronger with a better vision of that. And so, we moved forward, and while we had many large public meetings with, you know, maybe 100 or more people, we also had many what I'll call Zoom living room conversations with everybody from, say, the National Honor Society students to our plus company peers, to several congregations of churches with much smaller groups, where we were able to really get a lot of one-on-one feedback and people in a pretty comfortable setting. So, we also had a ton of feedback and input via our website and poll lists and the social pinpoint mapping. And so, we tried a bunch of different methods to get us here. So, the document itself really focuses on our top goals. There are 10 top goals, and they are color-coded by the topics. And so, you'll see that color coding that you see here carried throughout the document. So, the yellow you see is related to housing, and as you go through the document, everything that is under the goals related to housing is that bright yellow color. And so, that provides some ability to kind of distinguish the different sections of the master plan as you're flipping through the document. In addition, keeping in mind as we go through this, we really talked about some key development areas in the city, the ones that you guys see more than any others, most likely, and where we've seen a lot of development, but we also expect the most development and change in the city in the next five or 10 years to occur. And so, those are highlighted on this map, and when we talk about redevelopment, it's really about these areas. It isn't necessarily about the smaller neighborhoods, but it's about these key corridors and how we move forward from there. So, this is a breakdown of the actual document and how you read the plan. So, our three top core guiding principles that are woven throughout this are equity, resilience, and climate protection. Within that, we have the six kind of topic areas that are color-coded. So, here you can see we're looking at land use and development. These topic areas come from the RSAs of some of the required elements of a master plan that's set by state law. So, land use and development is all orange. It starts with that title, a vision underneath, and then to the right, you get existing conditions. Some information on the next couple pages is where are we at right now today? Let's give this some context. And then, you get the next page down into some of the goals and actions and recommendations. I know it's really hard to see on the screen, and I apologize. It looks much better when you look at it, and you can see it on the website. In the website, it does come in a single page or a two-page spread, so there's two documents posted. It's just easier to print the single page. It's the exact same document, but you can see it laid out in the two-page spread. What we've also done to try and keep us on track and for something we can measure ourselves against on an annual update is to create this report card with some measures related to each of the top goals and topic areas. And so, collectively, these different measures together, oh, welcome, will help us to understand if we are moving forward and towards achieving our goals over the next two, three, five, 10 years and longer, because as you're all very aware, land use goals and planning take a long time to fulfill themselves. They are not an overnight process. So, for example, under housing, it's kind of hard to see, but the first one from the housing study talks about how we need 5,000 new housing units in the city by 2030. And so, it says we have 34,000-ish housing units now. By 2030, the goal is to get to 39,000. So, if on an annual basis, we can pull these stats for you and we can kind of show you how we're moving forward towards these goals, and as a next step, as we're getting into the land use code update, looking at these goals over time is going to be a really important way for us to see and measure the progress we are hopefully making or maybe not making, and where we need to make some tweaks towards some of these things. So, how it's laid out, this is, the blue section is, this is in carbon-free transportation and building design. You can see a goal up top in the blue, which is hard to see on your screen, but it defines the goal a little bit, and then there's the actions and each of the recommendations that go with those actions. And it also has a timeframe with those recommendations, and those are short-term, medium-term, and long-term recommendations about how long those things will take to implement. Yes, Mark?
So, what do you do with the previous initiatives and other plans that weren't achieved? Is this like you start over from scratch, or do you try to incorporate those?
That's a great question. I might actually have a slide on it. I'll just pop forward a little bit. Here we go. So, here are some of the huge milestone plans that have happened in the past 20 years that are incorporated into here. So, for example, the housing study set some goals. Those have been pulled into here. A lot of things from the resilient Nashua plan have been pulled into here. Some of the newer things, the arts and culture plan that the arts committee has put forward, those are in this document. So, we didn't wipe them out. We tried to pull them in and acknowledge those and make sure that what we are hearing from the public aligns from those, or that we talk about those and how we've shifted focus a little bit in there. So, great question. So, those are acknowledged in here, and it's part of the document as well. So, here we go. So, here's an example, a little bit bigger in the housing section. We talk about housing. There's a bit of a vision right there, and then we start to get into the existing conditions on the right-hand side. And here's some more of the existing conditions, for example, that we pulled from the housing study that talks about where we're at, what are some of the really important things we've been looking at, and how did this inform some of our discussions with larger groups about housing? I would say one of the number-one thing we've heard through this process from so many people is the lack of housing and the lack of affordability of housing, and so that's an easy one to bring up and show you. And so, with that, we then have some goals and some actions and recommendations. At the end of the document that isn't quite done yet will be an implementation matrix, so you can go to one big sheet and see all these things that are laid out over almost 100 pages, so you can go to your snapshot, and that is still in the works to make sure we pull everything just quite right. This is a very large document, thanks to the tremendous amount of engagement we had from the community, and so it's hard to distill all of that down effectively. So, again, here's all the plans that have kind of fed into this and made it what we are today. And then, what happens next? We're here to talk to you tonight, discussions, questions. It'll be officially submitted to the Board of Aldermen at their meeting next week as a piece of legislation and referred to you for a public hearing at your meeting on the 23rd to have the official public hearing. From there, we'll go back to PEDC with your recommendation for PEDC to refer it to the full board and hopefully for final adoption in October. We are really looking forward to next steps. We've heard so much from the community, and I think one of the most important things about going through a planning process is then actually following through and implementing what we've heard. It's worth your time to engage with us, because we heard you, and we're going to do something about it. So, we have set aside funding to bring on consultants to help us with the land use code update, and our next step is to outline that process for the land use code update and to get consultants on board to help us move forward with that. And you, I think, and ZBA members will be a very critical piece of that moving forward. That is what I have, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions? Mr. Ballinger?
Mr. Chair, yes, it's more of a logistical question.
Sure.
I don't see September 23rd as a regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Board. Is that a special meeting, and is that only to address this topic, or will there be other items on the agenda on the 23rd?
Correct me if I'm wrong, it's just for the master plan?
Correct. It's just going to be for the master plan. It's going to be a special meeting that night.
Thank you.
And our consulting team, UTIL, will be here to present the document in a much more in-depth fashion than I just did for you.
Great. Is there an invite that's been sent out for that?
It will be. We will get it.
Other questions? I definitely encourage everybody to go to the website, get ahead of, you know, looking at everything prior to the 23rd, so you can see what's there, and if you do have questions, put them together. I mean, the consultant team will be there and be able to answer a lot of the questions. Both Adam and I have been riding along with this process since the very beginning, too, and if you have questions, we can kind of address, I think, some of them as well, particularly on how we'll move through the processes if you do. But yeah, it's exciting. I think, you know, getting into the next steps is a big lift as well. Other questions? Okay, I think we're good.
Thank you very much. I will let you get to your...
I think this, we would restart at 7:00.
Correct.
For the next piece of it, probably just need to adjourn this section of it. Somebody wants to make a motion?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair?
Okay, so a motion by Mr. Ballinger to adjourn the 6:30 meeting, specific to the introduction of the master plan. Do we have, I'll take a second anyway, by Mr. Peterson. We get our, I guess we got a roll vote still, too, right? Is there anybody online? Is it online right now?
My phone is off.
Okay, just a mic. So, we'll roll vote it.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper, yes. Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And Mark Mead?
Yes.
Okay, so we're adjourned until 7:00 o'clock, so we're going to start our regular meeting. Can you see my name?
Well, we didn't. You weren't here at the start.
This meeting of the ninth of September, 2021, City of Nashua Planning Board. Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes. Mayor Dantes, Mike Peterson.
Here.
Scott LeClair.
Here.
Adam Varley.
Here.
Maggie Harper, here. Alderman David Tenza. Alderman Jan Schmidt. Dan Hudson.
Here.
Bob Ballinger.
Here.
Larry Hirsch.
Here.
And Mark Meehan.
Here.
Okay, so we have a quorum. I'm going to read some of the procedure here, as this is a sort of a hybrid meeting. So again, my name is Scott LeClair. I'm the chair of the City of Nashua Planning Board. And again, we're at the ninth of September, 2021 Planning Board Meeting. This evening's meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format. The meeting is accessible in person in the third floor auditorium of City Hall, located at 229 Main Street, Nashua, and also via Zoom. The link has been posted on the publicly posted meeting agendas. Members of the public and representatives of the applicants have been encouraged to attend the meeting via Zoom, though they also can be attending here at City Hall. Real-time public comment is going to be available here at City Hall as well as via Zoom. Pursuant to RSA 91-a23, members remotely this evening have indicated their participation is not reasonably practical due to the temporary constraints we have here and combined with the need for adequate space for public attendance. If any individuals that are listening do have issues with attending the Zoom meeting, please go ahead and call 603-589-3115, and they will help you connect. In the event the public cannot access this meeting via the remote methods I talked about, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note, the board will continue to take all votes via roll call tonight, and we do appreciate your understanding and patience. I'm going to also kind of just go through a few more procedures here for the folks in front of us. So the procedure of the meeting and hearings are going to work such that after each legal notice of each conditional special use permit, site plan, or subdivision is read by myself, the board will determine if the application is complete and ready for us to take jurisdiction. The public hearing will begin at a time at which the applicant or representative will be given time to present an overview and a description of their project. They'll speak to whether or not they agree with the recommended staff stipulations, and the board will have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. I'll then ask for testimony from the audience. I'll first ask for anybody wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan. If you decide that you'd like to do that, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. If it's on Zoom, you'll be asked to just unmute and again state your name and address for the record. This is your time to express any concerns or ask any questions you have regarding the plan. I'll next ask for testimony in a similar fashion from those wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The board will then ask any relevant follow-up questions of the applicant. The applicant will then be given a rebuttal period, at which time they'll speak to any of the concerns raised by public testimony. After this is completed, the public hearing will end, and the board will resume a public meeting, at which time we will deliberate and vote on the application in front of us. I'd ask that both sides keep their remarks to the subject at hand and not to repeat what has already been said. We, as a board, want to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on testimony presented and considering all the applicable approval criteria established in the Nashua Revised Ordinances for these conditional special use permits, site plans, and subdivision plans. All right. So first up on the agenda, we have some minutes in front of us from the August 19th, 2021 meeting of the Planning Board. Has anybody from the board had a chance to take a look at these minutes and want to make a motion as to whether they're ready for us to accept as written, or there are any recommended amendments?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the August 19th, 2021 Planning Board Meeting, as-is.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Ballinger to accept as-is. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? Okay, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson.
Yes.
Scott LeClair.
Yes.
Adam Varley.
Yes.
Maggie Harper abstain. Dan Hudson.
Yes.
Bob Ballinger.
Yes.
Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
And Mark Meehan.
Abstain.
Okay, so that motion passes. Next up, communications from staff.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Nashua Planning Board. Following correspondences were received after your packet was mailed out. September 3rd, 2021, Master Plan Correspondence from Matthew Sullivan. September 7th, 2021, Lower Mary MacRover Local Advisory concerning the Nashua Landing Project. September 6th, 2021, Sky Ventures, New Hampshire Correspondence, Nashua Landing. September 3rd, 2021, Staff Memorandum from Matt Sullivan dated September 3rd and 5th, Summary Sheet for the Nashua Landing. Vaness and Associates, September 8th, 2021, concerning Nashua Landing. September 8th, 2021, from Hinckley Allen, Nashua Landing. September 8th, 2021, Eastern Retail Properties, Nashua Landing. September 3rd, One C and Pine Street, Joe Mandola. That's for case 8210188. And September 3rd, 2021, Mr. Patel from 69 Cherrywood Drive. September 8th, 2021, Mr. Balakrishnan, 65 Cherrywood. Ludwig and Mary Heel, September 6th, 2021, correspondence for Chop Berry Lane. Mr. Rathie, 67 Cherrywood, case 8210177, September 8th, 2021. Those are all for the 69 Cherrywood Drive, which will not be heard tonight.
Okay.
Number 13, Memorandum from Fussin' O'Neil, September 8th, 2021, response to the Hoyle-Tanner comments, Nashua Landing. Revised Traffic Impact Studies, September 8th, 2021, from Fussin' O'Neil. And Crimson Properties, 8210182, eliminate existing waiver. Riverfront Landing, 8210189. That just combined three and modified four and five together, and you'll see that in your packet. So it's just two amendments, and that would be it.
Okay, thanks a lot. I'm not sure we have any reports of myself, the committees, or any liaison tonight?
Not at this time.
Okay. All right, so we're going to move on to the meeting. I'm just going to, just for the folks in the audience and those listening on, I'm going to just one item on the agenda. First up, I'm going to hear new business subdivision plan, 821-0187. This is a subdivision plan from Paul G., Michael G., Gagnon. Owners, City of Nashua applicant. This is an application and acceptance of proposed subdivision plan to subdivide the existing lot into two, into new lots and dedicate a portion of the Lot 25 as public right-of-way. This property is located at 44 Buck Meadow Road. So first up from the board, has anybody a chance to take a look at this application? Want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction? Mr. Varley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would make the motion that the application is complete and ready for the board to accept jurisdiction.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Varley to take jurisdiction. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion by the board? Okay. Hearing none. We'll go ahead and take a roll vote on the jurisdiction.
Mike Peterson.
Yes.
Scott LeClair.
Yes.
Adam Varley.
Yes.
Maggie Harper, yes. Dan Hudson.
Yes.
Bob Ballinger.
Yes.
Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
And Mark Meehan.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes, so we have jurisdiction. So I'd ask the applicant, whether they're representative for 821-0187, to come up first. And just for your own, for everybody here in the audience and coming up, if you're at the microphone, you can go ahead and lower your mask, just because we're trying to get a decent recording as well. Then you're moving away. Go ahead and start that. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Steve Auger. I'm a project manager with Hayner Swanson, and our office is located at 3 Congress Street here in Nashua. Joining me in the audience this evening, also from our office, is Mr. Dennis Pollack. He is the Licensed Land Surveyor who prepared the boundary on the plan that's before you, and Alderman Rick Dowd. As you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, the purpose of the plan, we're seeking approval for a subdivision of Lot 25, Map C. The plan actually serves two purposes. The first is to create a right-of-way dedication of 0.175 acres, that is 7,617 feet. And the second is to subdivide Lot 25 into two lots, being new Lot 25, which is approximately 8.02 acres, and new Lot 2991, which is approximately 17.69 acres. Quickly, some information about the lot. It is Lot 25, Map C, which has an address of 44 Buck Meadow Road. The owners are Paul and Michael Gagnon. The lot is approximately 27 acres in size. It is in the R40 rural residence with flexible use overlay district. The abutters are residential homes, city-owned tracks, and undeveloped land. And the lot currently has frontage on Buck Meadow Road. As you know, this plan is related to the pending middle school project. So what I'd like to do now is call your attention to the plan on the board and kind of highlight exactly what we're doing. I used several different colors to be able to point out the various aspects of the plan. So Lot 25 is kind of the odd-shaped track that is highlighted in blue. So as you can see, it fronts down on Buck Meadow Road where the lower part is, and then there's a small little pinch point right in the middle of it, and then there's a larger half to the north of it. To the left of, to the left of the blue lines, that first orange line, which kind of looks like a backwards number seven, that's one city-owned track. And then to the right of it, also an orange, the larger track, that's the track where the potential new middle school is going to be developed. So then if you look in the middle of the blue lot, that tiny little green area that I've highlighted, and you can see on the right part of my plan, the blow-up area in green, that is the section of land that if the subdivision's approved, that will be the area that is dedicated to right-of-way. So in the bigger picture of things, the reason why we're doing this is the access road that would serve the new middle school, it would originate from Buck Meadow Road and go through the first city-owned lot in orange on the left, go right through the small green area, which is what's going to be dedicated for right-of-way, and then access the larger orange lot, which would be the city's school property. So really, the main driver of this plan is to dedicate that small right-of-way area to connect the proposed access road. And then, just because of the location of it in the odd shape of Lot 25, the byproduct of this is we wind up with two lots, one which fronts on Buck Meadow, that's the lower, approximately eight-acre lot. And then the larger lot highlighted in blue, which is approximately 17 acres, that will have frontage on the, on the green right-of-way once that is accepted as right-of-way. So it's, it is a subdivision plan, it's just not your typical subdivision plan that we bring before you. With regards to stormwater, there's no increase in impervious surface with this plan, as this plan doesn't propose any development, so there's no downstream stormwater issues. Any, any stormwater issue or stormwater regs would be met and taken care of on the pending school subdivision plan, as that is a site plan, which will be brought before you at a later date. We are asking for six waivers. They're all kind of rather unique on this. If you'd like, Mr. Chairman, I can read my entire waiver letter, but I believe you folks all have a copy of it in your records, so I can quickly summarize the six waivers for you, if that's what you would prefer.
Yeah, just summarizing them is fine.
Okay. The first one is a waiver of Section 9.5 of the Nashua City Planning Board Bylaws, and that is to record the plan prior to the 30-day appeal period. Reason for that is the city needs to acquire Lot 25 from the Gagnons, and in order to do that and get the plan recorded and thus make the right-of-way necessary for the access road, they do need to acquire that first. And given the overall schedule associated with the middle school plan, should it be approved, that's something that they're just trying to speed up the process. The second waiver is Section 190-165B of the Nashua Land Use Code. Simply, that says you cannot create a double-frontage lot. So if you look at the lower lot that I've highlighted in blue, the existing frontage for that lot right now is on Buck Meadow Road, and the northern part of that lot will have additional frontage on the lower part of the green area once it becomes right-of-way. So it's not our intent to create a double-frontage lot, it's just kind of an unfortunate byproduct of the area in green that becomes the right-of-way. So when we, when we divide the lot in half at that point, will, the both blue tracks will have frontage, and the lower blue lot will just have a second area of frontage on that right-of-way. The third waiver is Section 190-212 of the National Land Use Code, and that is to waive not only the requirement for sidewalk construction, but also the pending contribution that can be substituted in waiver of construction. As I mentioned, this isn't your typical subdivision plan that, where this would apply. There's no proposed construction with this. And I haven't seen the site plan, but I would imagine any necessary sidewalks to, you know, kind of secure pedestrian safety would be part of that design, so we don't feel that sidewalks or the waiver for contribution is necessary in this case. The fourth waiver is Section 190-282B3 of the National Land Use Code, and that requires bearings and distances to be shown on all the lots. The lot in blue, Lot 25, we have not surveyed that. Hayner Swanson, that is, has not surveyed it. We have surveyed the two lots in orange, so, and because those boundary lines share a portion of Lot 25, the area in green, that's how we're able to determine those lines and get an exact calculation of the right-of-way frontage. If we were to survey the entire Lot 25, it's, like I said, it's approximately 27 acres, that would be at an extended cost to the city, and it really offers no, it offers no benefit to this plan since we're able to calculate that right-of-way area based on our existing knowledge of the two lots in orange. The fifth law, the fifth waiver is Section 190-282B9, and that is for the physical features on the site and within 1,000 feet of the site. As we have recently, over the past handful of months, in order to survey that and reflect the existing conditions within 1,000 feet of the site, that would require approximately surveying 72... that would require approximately surveying 72 acres of land, which is, is an exorbitant cost and just kind of creates a nightmare in order to do that, never mind the costs, needing people's permission to go on those tracks and, and whatnot. And again, that would offer no value to this plan in terms of what the purpose of it is. The last waiver that we are asking for is Section 190-282B26, and that is the typical operation and maintenance plan, and recording that at the registry of deeds. For a typical subdivision plan where we are proposing some type of development, that's a standard feature that we always incorporate into our development plans. In this case, again, it really doesn't apply to this plan since there's no development here, and that is something that would be part of the site plan when it eventually comes before you. With regards to technical review committee comments, the fire department had none on our plan. The engineering department had a couple of comments. We addressed those, revised the plans, turned it back into Mr. Mandola, and he is fine with our comments. In closing, we believe the plan has been prepared in accordance with the Nashua Land Use Code, and we respectfully seek your approval. At this time, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thanks. I just have one question regarding the, the lower blue lot there that now has that slight amount of double frontage. Is there anything in, in, I guess the short question is, is there any way that that lot can have a curb cut into the blue, the new lot? It's not that I want one, I actually don't, but are we setting up a situation where that lot could, could get a curb cut there, which would seem to be not consistent with what we're trying to do here? Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, no, I, I see what you're saying.
Is that too short of a frontage for a curb cut anyway?
No.
Or is there a weight and limit so that doesn't happen?
Well, I mean, part of, part of the way we, in, in, again, the, the green area is a, you know, is definitely an oddball shape. Part of the reason that the, the, kind of the horizontal widths of the right-of-way area are what they are is the, the firm that's developing the, the school plan, they, they gave us a, a copy of, of their working plans, as they're the ones that have the road designed. And so, so it has to be that width with that amount of frontage in order to make the, not only the road, but any, any grading for the construction of that road and any potential utilities that go in that area, it all has to fit within the green right-of-way zone. So, so that's one reason that there is that amount of frontage. You know, whether the, the lower lot could get a second curb cut on there, I, I don't believe I know the answer to that. I, I don't know if that's something that, you know, that the Department of Public Works or, or the, the planning department could say no to.
They agreed on both the curb cuts.
Yeah, I'll. Yeah, I don't know, Dan, is that, do you want to comment on that?
Sure, Mr. Chair. I'm not privy to all the details of the agreement for the property, but it is my understanding that the owner of the parcel wishes to retain the rights of, of curb-cut access on each side of that, on what will be the new road, so.
Okay.
So yeah, I think that is, that is a right they want to preserve. Of course, they would have to come and get that approved at the time.
You'd have to come through a site plan, yeah, change, okay. All right. In that curb cut review, that's, that goes through your office as well for?
Yeah, obviously, it depends what type of development it is. You know, if it's a single-family home or whatever, yes.
Okay.
Somebody, somebody will review it.
Yeah. Okay. That's the only kind of question I had. Anybody else from the board have a question for the applicant? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Auger, I just wanted to, to clarify or make sure I fully understand. Will the city own the green parcel in fee outright? Or, I guess that's the question. Will the city own that parcel in fee outright?
It'll, it'll be dedicated right-of-way.
But is that the same as owning it in fee?
Right, I think, I think your question is, is it, is it effectively an easement? Or is it owning the parcel?
Yes, and, and if it is an easement, why not just call it an easement? I, I think the nomenclature might be confusing to me. I'm familiar with dedicating right-of-way, but I think the ownership status is, is a question that needs to be answered.
I'm, I'm going to let Dennis Pollak of our office, our licensed land surveyor who prepared this, that's kind of more in his area, I'm going to let him answer that question.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, Dennis Pollak from Hayner Swanson. The, there, there is currently a purchase and sale that's already been agreed between the Gagnons, who own Lot 25, and the city of Nashua. And so, once the plan is approved and recorded, the city will be deeded the area in green that's dedicated as right-of-way, so they'll own it in fee. The city will own it in fee.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions by the board? Okay. Hearing none from the board, I'll go ahead and open up to the audience. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern or have a question of the plan? Okay, that includes anybody on Zoom? Okay. Hearing none. I'll go ahead and give the board one more chance to ask any questions of the applicant or staff that were in the hearing.
I just.
Go ahead, Mr. Varley.
And I could probably ask this in the meeting as well, but this is a question for staff. So, the, the one question I had about the, was about the sidewalks that Mr. Auger answered, but I, I did, he wasn't familiar, he said, with the, with the nature of the site plan. I'm just wondering, does staff know whether the site plan addresses the connectivity of the sidewalk? I'm assuming it, it does, but I'm just, do we know that yet, or is, is that?
We have started reviewing it. I, I don't have it in front of me, so I can't answer all the questions, but I believe that the new road is going to have a sidewalk on it. The new road that's going to be created.
Right.
Yes.
So, yeah, because there's, I mean, there's an existing sidewalk on Buck Meadow Road that ends right near where I think the entrance would be. So I've assumed that that would be connected and through the road.
But we're still, it's still being reviewed and, and being assessed as to what is going to be needed down there for traffic improvements. And that'll be, should be before the board at, at the October meeting.
The site plan itself?
Correct.
Yeah.
Right. And the only reason I'm asking this question is because I think there should be some, some reference, to the extent that we're going to waive the sidewalk requirement, that it's based on the assumption that, that that's going to be addressed in the site plan.
It'll be addressed at site plan time.
Any other questions by the board? What, in here? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing, move into the meeting. So, so pretty straightforward subdivision. I think most, many of you on the board have kind of seen some of the development of the, the school lot here. I think we've gotten most of our questions answered. Does anybody have any topics they want to discuss in the meeting here? All right. Anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Varley?
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve new business Project 821-0187 subdivision plan. And that motion to approve would be with the finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in subdivision NRO Section 190-138G. And that will be with a total of seven stipulations. And the first six of those are all waiver requests. So stipulation number one, with respect to a request for a waiver from the 30-day appeal period, prior recording, where it is granted will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number two, regarding a request from 190-165B with respect to double frontage, where it is granted will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number three, for a waiver from 190-212, which requires sidewalks to be constructed, where it is granted will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And further, that, that waiver is substituted with the understanding that the, the sidewalks will be adequately addressed in the forthcoming site plan. Stipulation number four, for a waiver from 190-282B3, which requires bearing and distances of all property lines, is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number five, requesting a waiver from 190-282B9, requiring physical features on the site within 1,000 feet, is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number six, for a waiver of 190-282B26, requiring operation and maintenance plan and easement for recording, is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And stipulation number seven is written in the staff report.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve of the seven stipulations as stated by Mr. Varley. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Meehan. Any further discussion by the board? Okay. Hearing none. We'll go ahead and take a roll vote.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper, yes. Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And Mark Meehan?
Yes.
Okay. So, thank you, that motion passes. All right. So, next up, we're moving back to our old business. So we, we have three old business items. An old business subdivision plan, 821-0028. An old business site plan, 821-0029. An old business site plan, 821-0062. And all of these are with respect to the Landing at Nashua LLC care of Dick Anagnost. Folks, if, if I could have the discussions outside, that'd be good, just because we're hearing it up here, so. And a reminder, these are all for the Landing at Nashua LLC care of Dick Anagnost owner. And these are all related to the property, it's 2 East Britbrook Road. These are currently on the table, or have been tabled. At this point, we had, we had tabled these items specifically to receive additional information regarding traffic improvements and study, which albeit receiving quite a bit of information very recently, have received. And we had specifically talked about the applicant's traffic engineering experts being available at this meeting to address some of the original abutter comments that were presented at the last meeting, as well as some of the board's questions at this meeting. So I think that adequately explains where we were at. That being said, before we take it off the table, question for the applicant, the traffic engineer is here?
Yes.
Okay. With that additional information, I'll leave it to the board at this point. Whether, does somebody want to make a motion as to whether to take these three items back, you know, off the table to hear more information from the applicant? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to remove the following cases from the table. Case number 821-0028. Case 821-0029. Case 821-0062.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Ballinger. So we have a motion to remove these from the table and open up for the hearing for more applicant input and questions from the board. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Varley. Any further discussion by the board? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I would just like to say, I was certainly in favor of tabling these cases so the applicant would have an opportunity to provide traffic testimony. I was a bit shocked this morning to basically find a 600-page document drop in my email. I think that puts the board at a disadvantage, and I don't think that is, I think there's a better way to do business. That, that doesn't change my mind, that I think that we should have delayed this until such time. I was not expecting a plethora of new information when we had three weeks since the last information, since the last meeting. And that's my comment on that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thanks. Any other discussion before we vote on the removal from the table? Okay, let's go ahead and take a roll vote.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper, yes. Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Mark Meehan?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion passes. So for the applicant, so we have all three items back in the hearing here. And just a reminder, I think, you know, what we're looking for right now is, is to, I, I think you had a summary memo that was passed along on the traffic.
Yep.
Definitely if you could present that to us, since we haven't had a heck of a lot of time to look at it anyway.
Yeah.
And, and then, yeah, we'll probably have some questions on the traffic side. And then any changes, obviously, that have been developed along the way here with the guy in traffic?
Mr. Chair, if I could just add, add one point to that, and it really goes to Mr. Ballinger's observation. In terms of framing it, if you could, I think it would be helpful to, to get an understanding of, you know, the 600 pages we received, what does that mean in terms of, you know, the substantive updates to the information that predated, you know, the, the submission of that in, in this meeting?
Yep.
So that we can get an understanding of, of sort of how much of that is, is just a reiteration of existing data and information, and how much of that represents your changes that were meant to address, you know, comments from, you know, the abutter or the board or whomever.
Yep.
Or the, or the, obviously, the city consultant comments.
Right, yes.
Right. Okay, great. For the record, Brian Pratt, Hudson O'Neil, civil engineer in Manchester at 50 Commercial Street. And thank you again for having us. We were here, good summary, we were here three weeks ago, and we had a very productive meeting. One of the requests of that last meeting was that we assemble the original traffic impact document along with all the, the addendums and the appendices that we've produced responding to comments. So the report that you received is very little new information. We did italicize the new stuff in green so that you can quickly go through. I would say 90% of it, 95% of it, is information that this board has already seen with previous submittals. There was some additional information that was added based on some comments that were brought up at the last meeting, and some comments that we received with the HKA letter, you know, about a week ago, week and a half ago. So apologies for the late response. We have prepared a PowerPoint presentation, and Lynda Greer, our traffic engineer, is here, I'll bring her up in a moment. And there were really three kind of outstanding comments, and those are summarized in the separate letter memo that we sent as well. So really, the information in that memo is the only new information, and it's really kind of pulling together everything. So what I'll do now is I'll bring up Lynda Greer, our traffic engineer, and I'll let her run through kind of the main topics to, that were discussed at the last meeting that were still outstanding.
Great, thanks.
Hi. By the record, I'm Lynda Greer from Hudson O'Neil.
You can pull that mic if you need to. Get it down a little.
Shorter.
Sometimes it doesn't pick up as well as it should.
Is that better?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay. So, yes, I apologize. 600 pages is a lot. It was a lot for us to do. Again, it's a lot of appendices and stuff from before. It's some stuff that is new in the appendices, that was also in other memos. Some stuff is changed because other decisions were made along the way, like no right turn on red at Adventure Way. We had to rerun all of our analysis based on some trip distribution numbers that were done, that accounted basically 14 trips. So the outcome did not change, but a couple seconds in delay here and there. But for consistency reasons, we reran everything so that it was all there. So, just further clarification, everything that's new in the verbiage is italicized in green. Hopefully, it takes. Hopefully, it takes some points and questions that people have asked along the way and just clarifies them. But methodology of how we did things, what we did, did not change. And I'm going to explain what we did, and why we did, and how we did. So, hopefully, I'm going to answer all your questions. So, the three points, Brian mentioned that there were three points, three discussion points, these are kind of the things that keep asking questions, that's based on trip distribution. So, I'm going to discuss how our methodology was actually a conservative approach. Trip distribution, how we put the cars and traffic trips on the network, and why we put them where we did, we're going to explain that. And then, the last thing is kind of how the intersections operate, based on our assumptions, and the trip generations and the distributions. So, to first clarify our approach, and our conservative approach, there was four different things, and those are noted in, in the study, where we were conservative. What I'm going to do today is I'm going to go through each one of those, and I'm actually putting numbers to them, because in the study, we just say it was conservative. So, the first thing with consultation, actually, with the city, we kept the Costco trips of the existing Costco on the network. So, that almost is like saying, there's a Costco here, and now we're putting a new Costco over there, and all of the people that are going to shop at the old Costco are going to be shopping at the new Costco. So, that's almost, you know, in a way, double. But, the reason we did that is because down the road, somewhere between now and 2032, a light use might go in, we don't know. And so, keeping those on the network for the interim time, it takes into account that traffic for that site of what may be, and who knows what that'll be. So, the other thing we did was we used ITE trip generation for a discount club, rather than using Costco's, existing Costco site. And I'll explain more on that in a bit. And then, we also included the land use for a gas station on top of the land use for a discount club. And then, in Phase Two, the additional sites, when we chose developments, possible developments for those sites, we chose high generating sites to add additional to the network. I'll explain a little bit more there. So, this chart, and I'm sorry, it might be hard to see the little numbers, but what this is, is when we first did our study, we took, we figured out where the Costco trips were, if the Costco was taken out, and the trips were put into the new Costco. So, we actually have kind of numbers of what that would be. So, when you break it down to an AM and PM peak, if you kind of just look at Daniel Webster Highway going northbound, it works out to be about 52 trips in the PM, and 80 trips on a Saturday peak. And that's just kind of, there's other numbers, other places that are larger, and so forth, but I'll just grab those kind of general numbers. And then, southbound, there's like 52 in the PM, and 78 in the AM. So, what that means is, in our AM and PM trips, trip generations in our analysis, there's possibly 52 to 80 cars more on the network than what we'd be there with Costco, the old Costco, not having anything in that site. And so, then Costco's, Nashua Costco site versus ITE trip generation. One of the questions asked at one of the paneling board meetings was, you know, is Costco a high generator or a low generator compared to the ITE trip generation? So, actually, the Costco engineer, traffic engineer, back in October of 2013, they went out and did counts. And so, taking those counts and comparing them to the size that the existing site is, and put that into ITE trip generation, it ends up that Costco Nashua site, the existing site, is actually a little bit lower generator than ITE. But to be conservative, we didn't use the local data, we stayed with the ITE data. So, the results from that end up being, you know, an additional 59 trips in the PM, and about 20 trips on a Saturday. So, the other area where we were conservative was trips adding for also putting a gas station, actual gas station, land use on top of the discounted, discount club. So, the first little square up top is actually the description from the land use ITE code for discounted club. And this is the new 10th generation. I guess the ninth generation was a little bit different. But what changed was, some sites may include onsite fuel pumps. So, what's unknown is how much in ITE is it, a place with a gas station being accounted for in their trip generation. So, again, Costco's traffic engineers did a study, and that's what that second box down is, is blurred from that study. Now, the whole study is in the back in the appendix, so you guys can read the whole thing. But the results that come out of the study, is what they were looking at was, with a gas station, what's the internal trips, and what's the pass by? So, how many new trips does a site with gas stations make? And the results were approximately 14 for a PM, and 22 trips, that's for the whole site, that's not, you know, per gas station pump, that's for the whole site. Because, again, the gas station at the Costco site, you can only get gas there if you're a member. So, that kind of makes sense, right? I mean, maybe someone's going to go get gas there because it's cheaper, and they don't shop at the store. So, basically, it's saying 14 of those trips went there to get gas, and X may be doing any shopping, and on a Friday or a PM peak, and then Saturday was 22. But that's, we didn't use that. We use the ITE trip generation of a gas station on top of the discount club. So, what does that mean? That means in the PM, there's an additional 125 trips. And Saturday, there's an additional 104 trips. So, those were three places, we were very conservative, we took the conservative approach, we kept, added on to what was there. So, the outcome of those three approaches end up being in the PM, 236 trips. Now, that is trips on the whole network, that is trips coming to the site, or actually just on the network itself. And then, Saturday, 204. So, for Phase Two, this is a list of the assumed future land uses. Again, we picked high generators, a health club, a high turnover sit-down restaurant, a coffee donut shop with a drive-through, i.e. Dunkin' Donuts. Why did we do this? We do this so that we're conservative, again, so that we take in consideration anything possible in the future, but also, so it's accounted for when we come back, when Phase Two actually, we actually know what's going in, we can come back and say, all right, we assumed this, but this is what's coming in, and chances are, hopefully, if we did things right, we can say it's less than what was there, and we don't have to go through 600 pages of a traffic impact study to get to the next phase. All right, so that counts for kind of the trip generation, and what we did, and why we did it, and why we stand by that we were conservative, and we feel it was a good approach. Traffic distribution, this is the other one that has caused a lot of questions. So, first off, traffic is not water, it'd be nice if it was. Put a drop of water, I could know where it goes, it goes downhill, always goes to the same place every time. Traffic unfortunately doesn't do that, we have drivers that make decisions. And sometimes you might make a decision to go one way, and another time, and another day, you might make a decision to go a different way. So, we have to come up with something, we have to come up with some way to quantify things. So, we used a gravity model that was done by VAI, and it kind of helped decide what percentage of traffic came from where, based on traffic counts that were done before, and that was, that's in the, from before, that was exactly the same that was in the traffic study. The other thing that we did, and I guess this is where the real crux of the question becomes, and we have two different site entrances. You know, we've got Spitbrook Road, and that we consider, we consider that to be our main entrance, and Adventure Way, the second entrance. What we did was we did a split, two-thirds, one-third. Meaning, as someone is coming southbound, northbound, sorry, I'm coming northbound, and I'm going to hit Spitbrook Road to enter, two-thirds are going to make that right and enter. And one-third is going to continue on, and it's going to go to Adventure Way. And then, vice versa in the other direction. Two-thirds are going to use Adventure Way going south, and one-third is going to use Spitbrook Road. So, we had to come up with something. So, I'll do a, I'll try to, I'll do a personal little story, and it won't take too long. When I go to my home, I can stay on a busy arterial and go straight, or I can turn left, but that road has a pretty good left turn queue, but it may under's around in some, you know, lower speed roads, twisty-turvy, and I get to my house. Distance is a little longer, twisty-turvy, time is probably about the same, I don't have one light to go through. Sometimes if I'm in a hurry, I get up, I'm going to that intersection, and I'm approaching, and going straight, the light turns green. So, I know, I don't have to get in that turn lane, I can just keep going straight, and I can get home. So, I might decide to do that that day, when I hit that cycle, that's the green light. I actually prefer to go the twisty-turvy way and get out of the traffic. So, if the queue on that left turn is not long, I'll go ahead and jump in that and turn left. I have five people in my house. I have three teenagers, which is really scary that they're on the road, in my mind. But, we have this conversation all the time as we pull up to this intersection to make our decision to turn left or to go straight. Two of them say, I always go straight, straight's the fastest. And three of us say, well, we like to go this way. So, my demonstration is that it can depend on what day you are, which direction you're going to take. It depends on thoughts in your mind, and your decisions, and we can't, as engineers, determine that. So, we have to come up with something. So, that's why we picked two-thirds, one-third. Other people will argue that, we won't know, we won't know until the traffic gets out there, and the traffic starts driving, and makes their decisions. So, for this intersection, Adventure Way, there's going to be a long left queue headed southbound. People may do the same thing I do at my house, and decide to go straight when it's green, or decide to go left when it's not. If there's a big queue, they're going to pass. So, that's why we feel that splitting some amount of traffic makes sense. Also, I want to point out, in the picture there, is a sign that's on, in front of Webster Square, the first entrance on Webster Square on Daniel Webster Highway. It actually encourages people to use the next entrance. So, I'm kind of pointing that out, is it's already kind of a little bit of a precedence along Daniel Webster Highway, so don't block Daniel Webster, go to the next entrance, there's multiple entrances here, there's multiple entrances into Pheasant Lane Mall. The other thing that I wanted to show, that we realized, is that the traffic amount, so the numbers that you see here, and again, I'm kind of sorry that they're small, it's hard to blow this up big, but Saturday, in the base condition, so this is 2020 base, this is without Costco being there, there's a huge difference in the amount of traffic that's on the network on a Friday compared to a Saturday. So, in different places, it's varying differences, but in general, it's 30 to 40% higher on a Saturday. So, it's a different corridor on a Saturday than it is on a Friday. And I can kind of relate to that by how I use Daniel Webster Highway. On a Friday or a PM peak, I'm going there, getting one thing at one store, and getting home. It's almost more of a commuter or quick trip type. On a Saturday, I come down to Daniel Webster Highway with my husband, we go shopping at multiple places, we go out to eat, I'm actually generating more trips on a Saturday myself, if you put a tape out there and counted me, than I do on a evening peak. So, it's kind of a different corridor, and a different purpose, right, on a Saturday than it is on a Friday. So, kind of to wrap up the trip generation and distribution, it's best engineering judgment, it's personal preference, it's personal choice. We came up with methodology and decisions, and we feel that they're reasonable. Someone else may not think that they're reasonable, but hopefully, you guys think we're reasonable also. As far as for traffic operations, and I'll try not to get in the weeds, so, we use Synchro Traffic software, that gives us the output for how this intersection operates. And we look at that on a volume to capacity ratio, delay, how long someone sits at that intersection, and then level of service. And I'm sure you guys have heard all of those before. Some points that I would like to make on how we did our input, in the no build case, we held the existing signal timing. We got the timing from the city, we put that into the signal. And there was lots of talk back and forth, and there was lots of memos back and forth about PED, no PED phase, so that generated a whole bunch of extra stuff for you guys to look at. Reason we did that, there is a PED phase, exclusive PED phase at Adventure Way. So, and there's counts there, but they're very low. So, when you put in a PED phase in Synchro, which is the model that we use to calculate, it assigns green time across that whole cycle length. So, 23 seconds, which is how long it takes for the PED phase, is accounted for in the Synchro analysis, this level of services and delays, is included in that for every cycle length. We know that's not really going to happen, because there's not that much PEDs out there. But to be conservative, again, we didn't remove the PED phase, it's there, it's going to happen, we kept it in. So, there's a verbiage in the, in the study that says, chances are, it will operate better. Well, that's what it means, it'll operate better because those 23 seconds are not going to be used on that cycle unless the PED phase is pushed. But our analysis, there's no way to do that without including them, so they're included in the analysis and the level of services. The five intersections work as a corridor, they're coordinated together. So, that means that even if there's an intersection that could operate better at less cycle time, we have to keep that 120-second cycle time, so that there's a bandwidth that the cars can hopefully go through and not have to stop at every signal. So, we're not putting a priority on one intersection over the other, we're putting a priority on the corridor to move through smoothly. And that's how the analysis is ran. And then, the 120-second cycle length is held in the build condition also, which was from the original. And I guess one last thing I'll say is about, is that Spitbrook Road is considered the critical intersection for our corridor, and then there's offsets that are set for the other intersections. The important thing to look at with all these tables and little numbers, is that in general, when you're looking at the no build compared to the build, it's pretty much the same in the PM weekday peak. We have a level of service of D or better, until you get to 2032, where Adventure Way becomes an E. One thing I would point out is, in our analysis, the tripping point from a level of service D to an E is 52 seconds delay. to an E is fifty-two seconds delay. So you're already at fifty-two something in, uh, 2032 and then in, um, in the no build. So, a couple more seconds and you're flipping over to the E. So in general, the intersection is gonna operate. That's the intersection itself. Not a separate one approach, but the intersection. Um, in Saturdays, uh, midday peak, when we already discussed how many, how much more traffic is on the existing network. Um, with, uh, improvements, wi- with Costco, uh, it's relatively the same. Your, um, Es to Fs and still Es to Fs on, um, Saturday for, um, Daniel Webster and, uh, Adventure Way and, um, Spitbrook. Now, another thing to note is any intersection that has a V to C ratio over one. So some of these say E. Um, an intersection over one V to C means it's over capacity. So in general, even though it's saying it's an E, it's really operating as an F already. All right, queue lengths. This was another, um, area of, of discussion, for sure. So there's different methods for us to calculate queue lengths. Um, Synchro is the, the, um, software that we use to do the intersection analysis. It does put, um, does output for queue lengths. However, it, it, if you're into a situation where the queues are not cleared in that first green time or close to it. It starts doing these pounds and, and it doesn't, it doesn't calculate it right. So the next step is to go to a different software, which is SimTraffic, which works within Synchro. Um, but it's a simulation model. So, um, and the simulation model, again, because we are doing this as a corridor. It, it does the analysis based off of priority within that corridor. And, and that works pretty good for the outside intersections. Um, but really, that's not the best way to look at, um, Adventure Way or Spitbrook. We, um, the best way to look at those two intersections is looking at, um, including an internal model for, um, for Costco. And the reason why is because without the internal model from Costco, what happens is the simulation has all the traffic on that westbound approach, leaving that, the traffic that's in the model that says it's gonna be there. They all get there at one time. Well, they're not gonna get there at one time because we have a four-way stop condition in the internal, um, model. So while using the internal model, it then has the stop condition. And it allows the siphoning of traffic as it would, um, to the intersection at Adventure Way. So that's why that's the best way and the best model to, to replicate how it's actually really gonna operate. And I know that Brian showed a simulation last, uh, last meeting of the internal model and what it looked like. So I hope that clears things up. I know it's kind of confusing. But, any questions on the simulations and how we? Because the, the queues that are now in your report are from the SimTraffic, um, runs.
Um, so I have one question, just, just to clarify, um, regarding the, the split. You know, the one-third, two-thirds. So, let me just kinda state it the way I understand it. And you can tell me if I'm accurate. That's probably the best way. So, if, if I'm coming into the site, um, sort of, you know, from North Na- North Nashua.
Yep.
You, you've assumed, you've assumed coming down Daniel Webster, so that Adventure Way's on your left.
Yep.
You've assumed that two thirds of the traffic is gonna get in that left turn lane and wait for that light and enter the site on the Adventure Way entrance.
Correct.
And one third is gonna decide to go to the Spitbrook entrance. Now, what's, what I, what's the assumption from coming from the south?
Coming from the south, two thirds are gonna use Spitbrook.
And one third.
And one third is gonna use Adventure Way.
Adventure Way. So, so it's just the inverse?
Yes, just the reverse.
Okay.
Yeah. And then we assume they're gonna leave the same way, 'cause we have, the way they came in, they're gonna leave that, they're gonna go out the same way. Well, that may not be accurate or true because I may have gone to Costco and then I'm gonna get gas. And I'm not gonna go back to where I work. I'm gonna go home. So now I'm gonna get on the highway, right? I mean, but we have to pick something.
Yep. Okay. Mr. Varley?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Just, uh, essentially a follow-up to that question. So, I, I just wanna make sure I'm also understanding this correctly. So, I think if I read the assumptions correctly, in addition to what you just described with it being one-third, two-thirds going south, one-third, two-thirds coming north. You're also assuming it equal total distribution of traffic coming north and going south. In the total, it looked like it was.
Yeah, yes.
If you, if you count for those getting off the highway at Exit One. And those coming up DW Highway, that you're, you're, you've got the same proportions coming north and south. Does that make sense?
I. I don't know if that's completely true. There's a graph that shows the distribution of all the traffic coming to the network. And thirty-five percent comes from this direction, so many come from that direction, so many come from the other.
Yeah, so I think.
So I don't know that it's, it's truly like half and half.
Yeah, no, what I was reading is, uh, sorry, yeah, here it is. So, thirty percent from Turnpike South, thirty percent from Turnpike North. Ten percent from DW Highway North of the site and ten percent from DW Highway South. So that, that's, that's what I was looking at. So, I just, and I guess where I'm going with this is if you were to change the assumption going south. So, the, the criticism of that approach seems to be that you're undercounting the trips that would take that left onto Adventure Way. So it should be more than two thirds. If you were to change that assumption so that it were eighty or eighty-five percent of the trips you're assuming are taking a left there. I'm assuming then you would have to make that same adjustment for the traffic coming north. You know, in other words, you wouldn't have different assumptions.
If we're gonna change our assumption, we're gonna have to change the assumption everywhere.
Right. And so, it, and this is why, where I'm looking for guidance. That if you were to change those assumptions so that eighty-five percent of the traffic coming south is making that left on Adventure Way. And then make that same change in assumption coming north so that eighty-five percent of those trips are making it right on Spitbrook. That you're, you're ascent, you're largely just shifting the trips.
Correct.
Right.
Right, right. But, can I point you back to, we were extra conservative. There's lots of extra trips on the network. So hopefully, though, that extra conservativeness is gonna help make up for distribution changes that may happen because we can't control what people do.
Right, yeah. I guess I just wanted to get to the point, like, even if, even if we were to say, okay, the assumption going of the left turn to Adventure Way is wrong. And we should increase the number of trips taking that left. The way I read this, that's not gonna make a material difference. Because you're gonna just end up having, you know, some of those trips that were gonna be going south to the second entrance, okay, now they're taking that left. But the same, the trips that would've been coming north in your assumptions are now staying on Spitbrook.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. You can slice the pie lots of different ways. It's still the same piece of pie, right? It's still the whole pie.
Um, quick question regarding the, um, the new extended, um, lane pocket, if you will, coming south on, uh, Daniel Webster. The extension of that, that's the, is it the maximum extension that can be made with the current sort of right-of-way?
It's based off of the queue lengths of the, the worst case.
Right.
So basically, Saturday, 2032 is what we use to set that, that length.
I'm really asking, so physically speaking out there, I know the island right, you know, there is a sort of a, a middle lane there that the island is kinda currently now offset to the, to the west or whatever.
Right.
Um, you're, you're moving that island.
And we're narrowing that.
And narrowing it to create a pocket that's longer now going in from the, from the south.
Correct.
Onto Adventure Way. Is the length of that pocket limited by the physical roadway right now? Or are you just extending it to the length of your, what your model says? Yeah, I guess my question is, if that needs to be longer, could it physically actually be longer?
It could physically be longer. I have the, up on the screen, um, so you can kinda see the, the dark, um, lines right there. This is the length that we're extending it to. Physically, it could keep going further back if it needed to, 'cause this is all a median-controlled island. Um, if Fun World's entrance is ever expanded to a full.
Right.
Four-way intersection, um, we really can't go too much further than we are now because we'll need space.
But, but that would be an entrance to your site.
That would be, yeah, if the train station comes in, they may, um.
Yeah, so, I mean, practically speaking, there'd be no value to do that because the, you would just turn on the entrance to get into your site.
Yeah. So physically, yes, it could work, but like, like Linda said, it's been designed for the 2032 Saturday, which is twenty to forty percent higher traffic volumes than the PM peak, so.
How much, how much is left between where you are now and the potential Fun World entrance?
So like this distance here?
Yeah, that distance, what is it?
I can take a measurement. It's gonna take me a second.
That's okay. I mean, just ballpark it. Is that five cars? Is that ten cars?
Five or six cars.
Five or six cars. Okay. And the, 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 to do that, what does that require?
Um, so there's an existing two-foot median with two curbs on either side.
Yep.
Um, all we're doing is shifting that curb over. So we're, we're cutting, sawcutting it out, paving it flush, milling where we, you know, have that first sawcut line. And then putting a new three-foot island on the opposite side. So it would just be.
Continuing.
A little bit more of that to extend it a little bit further.
Yeah. But that's about a hundred feet, is that right?
If we were to go back to the Fun World entrance, another hundred, yeah, we could probably go another hundred feet, but.
Okay.
And, and just to, um, point out, the train station did not show a full four-way intersection there. They showed a right-in, right-out only. So they did not show, but we don't know.
Yeah.
You know, if that comes, they might, might choose to turn that into a four-way.
Yeah, okay.
Signal-controlled intersection.
Yep. Uh, Mr. Peterson?
Um, in the beginning of your presentation, uh, you spoke about the, uh, one-third, two-thirds split. Depending if they're coming from the south or coming from the north. I presume that one-third, two-thirds split is just referring to the Costco traffic, correct?
Correct, correct.
So.
Any, any traffic that was already turning there is still there. So, any, any trips in the base condition and counts and any trips that were in BJ's report are still making that left. We didn't change any of the existing, um, turning movements. Is that?
Let me put that in words that I understand.
Okay.
And that is the, uh, one-thirds, two-thirds split, um, that's regarding Costco traffic. But what about the traffic for all the other people conducting their business in that part of town? Are, are those numbers taken into account with your calculations? All those other cars that are not Costco?
All. Yes.
Are you saying the future uses on the property?
I'm talking about the people who frequent that part of town that aren't going to Costco.
They're already, they're already on the base network. All those people that are already in the base count, um, turning movements and network. So those are still there. Then there's the new trips for Costco that are distributed two-thirds, one-thirds. And then there's the additional trips for growth that are placed on the network balanced to what the turning movements were from before.
Okay, so you're taking the existing traffic, the new Costco traffic and future?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So, I got a few more slides.
Just to restate that, the Phase Two traffic, which could, you know, what you, that's in the model and the simulations.
Yes.
Right now as well.
And the Phase Two traffic, because those are separate uses from Costco itself.
Yeah.
Um, those, I believe, were just distributed to where it's kinda, some, some of the sites were really a lot closer to, um, Spitbrook and others were closer to Adventure Way. So a hundred percent of the ones that were on the Adventure Way side went there. We didn't do the two-thirds, one-thirds because there wasn't internal use within those separate new sites. And we couldn't assume that people coming for the restaurant, a new trip for the restaurant actually has a Costco membership, so they're gonna go there and they need the restaurant. So, still that split is a little different for Phase Two.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Man?
I just wanna make sure I understand. When you presented the 2032 projection with the different scenarios for the other spaces, you didn't include a train station in those projections?
No.
Why, why not?
Because we don't know if a train station is really gonna come. It's not up to this site to determine a train station. That's the capital corridor project. Hmm? I'm sorry.
You don't know if a restaurant's gonna come either.
We don't. But we have a site, a spot for something to go in. We don't know what that something is gonna be. It could be a ladies retail shop that doesn't generate as much traffic as a restaurant. But we had to come up with something. So that was why we did a conservative approach and put sites and assumed developments that are large, um, trip generators.
Uh, the other thing is if the train station does come in, then they will most likely construct the Fun World entrance. Which will give the whole site an additional outlet. And then there's also an easement through the Volvo property next door. So there's a potential that there would be another connection there. So, our, you know, uh, theory was that we really can't worry about those two entrances. But when the train station comes in, they'll have to do a traffic study. They'll build on what we had. They'll build on the, the sixty-seven thousand dollars that this project is donating to the city to do a corridor-wide study. And then they'll determine trips that will come through Fun World and, you know, that would probably help overall. It'd probably be a decrease.
Interesting, yeah.
Okay. Other question. Ms. Dodson?
Yeah, I just wa- I just wanna clarify that sixty-seven thousand dollars is not for a corridor study. We're not doing another study per se. It's to actually go out and, uh, counter traffic, so I guess that'd be the study part of it, sort of. But count actual traffic, adjust the signal timings, um, and, and implement updated timings and coordination plans for the corridor. So it's, it's an active thing that will be done. We're not just doing another study. Um, it's actually, you know, proactive and active effort to optimize timing, timings on the corridor.
Okay. You also mentioned, you know, you know, similar to Webster Square, there's a sign there that promotes the option for a second entrance.
Yep.
Is there anything in this, this would be part of the site plans, I guess, um, um, that is part of this that does that? Like, are those signs in there?
No.
Are there other mechanisms or things that could be put into the plan that could help promote um, the distribution that you asked, that you're proposing?
Right. So, we don't have any at this time, but, you know, when this project goes in and the new signals are on there and the cameras are working and we have the zone set up and the city can do their counts and they can figure out exactly what distribution people really are doing and set the timing to that. If it comes up that there's a need for something, that if, you know, there's extra blockage and then that's the time to add additional signs. But I don't know that right now, when we don't know that it's even gonna be an issue. And we're talking about 2032 where it's, where the problems are on a Saturday. Not, not Friday, not Wednesday, not Monday, not the PM peak, the Saturday peak. One hour a day on a Saturday. And actually, you know, if you're looking at the average or the ninety-fifth percent, which are the two columns in there. I would state that probably nine, the ninetieth, um, generation is fifteen minutes of that hour. So for fifty, we're gonna put in a bunch of signs and do all of this extra extending of lanes for fifteen minutes on a Saturday. 'Cause this report comes out and says that it needs it. Even though our trip generation was conservative, might have, might have over two hundred extra trips on the network. Or. Or do we wait to see what it really is, what the trips really are, where people are really driving and going, and, and set everything to that?
Yeah, I'm wondering though whether trying to change people's behavior is harder than initially train them. Right, so if you had the signs that say there are two entrances at the beginning, and I'm thinking of either like at the mall, there are signs that say, you know, for, for, you know, Route 3 South, it points you to a certain exit for the mall. For, you know, for Massachusetts South, go this way.
Sure, yep.
You know, for, you know, that could establish
Yeah, establish some of the precedence.
And I think it, you know, your, your thought of let's let people do what they do, they could get very, you know, now you're expecting to change the behavior with the sign versus build the behavior? I don't know if that's the right terminology.
Yeah.
But I'm assuming some of that is not a showstopper to this project, you know, so.
Yeah, correct, correct.
You know, so. Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, personally, there's some, there could be some improvement in the, with the signage to, to start building those behaviors. Particularly for people who are, let's say, heading south to Massachusetts. There's really no value in them going up Adventure Way.
Right, right.
Other than clogging the corridor.
Correct.
So, you know, a simple sign when it's built that says for those going south to Massachusetts, go this way.
Yeah.
Might be something reasonable.
Yeah, there's, there is that sign down by.
Yeah, the mall uses that concept, and I think it's reasonably effective. If you want to leave the mall and go Massachusetts, you don't go out, you know, down by Home Depot. I mean, it doesn't make sense, right?
Yeah.
But if you, particularly for something new and people haven't learned it yet, you know, that might be valuable, so.
Can work on training them.
Other questions, Mr. Meehan?
I'm sorry to keep going back to the split.
That's okay, I, I want to hammer it out.
I'm curious, as you do your statistics on that, what's the margin of error on that? So if you go 80/20, what happens to your traffic flow? How much can you shift that and say these numbers are valid? Because as you pointed out very carefully, it's human behavior, you really can't predict it. So we're all counting two-thirds, one-third, great, that's an easy number to get our heads around. If it shifts 10%, what happens? If it shifts 5%, what happens? Do you look at that? Is that, is there a margin of error that you can attest to?
Well, we can, we can take those trips and lay them out on a network and make those changes, but when you're getting down to the AM and PM peak, you're, you're probably talking about 10 cars. So, okay, so 10 more are going to be in that, you know, that queue over the hour. That doesn't, you know, mean, that's cycle length, that means over the hour that they'll be there. So a small shift from, you know, 80, 30, 70, 20, I don't think it's going to make much difference.
Statistically insignificant.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you, can you envision a split? And then maybe I'm asking you to be hypothetical here, but that causes a failure on Daniel Webster?
Correct.
Not Adventure Way, but like on Daniel Webster. Like, like if you were to put 100% in one of these directions, is there a failure of the traffic flow on Daniel Webster?
So the approach that's now going to get more traffic is going to have longer delay. It's going to need more green time to get through. But we try to, you know, we try to optimize the signal, so we're not putting favoritism on one approach. So, you know, we're trying to actually look at the intersection as a whole and, you know, not one single approach. So Saturdays, your intersections are already over capacity. You know, I guess another thing we didn't talk about was, you know, we put in our report, there's no meaningful improvement that can be done along Daniel Webster Highway. Well, but what, what does that really mean? And, you know, we explained it some more in, in the report this time, that there was another memo that, that explained that. You've got a cemetery, so at Adventure Way, the two critical approaches, existing approaches, is the southbound approach and the eastbound approach coming out of Royal Ridge. We can't widen the road that direction, both in, because there's a cemetery there. There's no way that's ever going to be able to happen. And then, you know, you've got development that's already happened on the corner on that eastbound approach. So those approaches are already constrained, and as we grow more traffic and put more traffic on, those approaches fail. Now westbound, all right. Costco comes in on the westbound approach. The westbound approach today, doesn't have much traffic on it. So it doesn't have a very, you know, if you're just looking at that approach, you know, the delay is pretty short. We're adding traffic there, that's where our site is, yes, it's going to be more. Is it going to make the whole intersection operate worse than what it does? No, our report says no, it doesn't. It operates similar as it does today in the no-build situation. So that's, let me, I've got two more slides.
Sure.
I just wanted to make sure that we hit that distribution.
Yeah, no, that's.
Go ahead.
Sure.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I'd like to make a point, I'm no traffic engineer. But one of the things I'd like. Dick Anagnost, I'm sorry, the developer, Levin Westwind Drive, Bedford, New Hampshire, you always catch me on that. I keep forgetting, I apologize, I get into the heat of the moment. One of the things that, that I don't want to be lost tonight is the fact that we have a conservative study in which phase one is being built, but phase two has been baked into it. Phase two is going to come back before this board. And all of the improvements for phase one and two are being built up front. By the time we come here back with phase two, we're going to know if these traffic improvements are busted or not. We're going to know if there's too many left-hand turns, we're going to know if there's not enough queuing space. Okay, we're going to know all of those things when phase two comes into play. So it's not like today you're going to make a decision and bust this in 2032. Okay, when phase two comes back before you, all of the corridor timing is going to be in place. All of the improvements for phase one and two will have been built off-site for traffic mitigation. And when phase two comes back, we're going to know, because we're going to be forced to take another study at this, we're going to know if there are additional issues. And before phase two is ever built, we're going to know whether the phase one improvements worked and whether they're going to work for phase two. So this isn't the end-all final. I mean, right now, we're talking about a conservative study with a projection that busts a decade from now for one hour on a Saturday. Okay, that's really what it boils down to. But realistically, this board gets another bite at the apple with the additional development that we're projecting, and we chose the worst-case scenario with the tenants going in there that were the highest traffic generators in order to get to this worst-case scenario. So therefore, you really do get a second bite at the apple. The mitigation is more than sufficient for phase one. Is it sufficient for phase two? When we come for phase two, we'll be able to tell you that. Thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yep, no, thanks, I appreciate it.
Two more slides, and he just, he just did half of my last one, so that, that'll make it quick. All right, so westbound queues on Adventure Way, that seems to be the approach that everyone is worried about. Again, I explained, we'd use the internal model and why the internal model is the best one to look at, and this is the output for the, from the internal model. So the longest queue, the very longest queue, on that one, actually, on that 15 minutes on a Saturday, is 261. The queue length that there is, the space that's there between Adventure Way and that first driveway is 200 feet. So that means that there's 60 feet overspill. Although, we did mitigation, we put the no-block, so those folks from those driveways should get in. So what does that mean? 61 feet on Saturday for 15 minutes? A car, depending on what, you know, which way you look at it, is either 20 feet or 25 feet. You divide that 61 by 20, you're talking about three cars. Three cars on 15 minutes on one Saturday, on a Saturday, are behind the intersection of the driveway to BJ's and Best Buy and CVS. So.
You're saying between the no-block and the, and the entrance to Costco?
Yep. And you guys saw the simulation last week, but these are with our new runs. So basically, in conclusion.
Just to clarify, and that's with the no-right turn?
That's with the no-right turn, yeah. The no-right turn. And, and the reason we have to do that no-right turn, I don't know if that was completely explained. So there, I think there's right turns allowed now, because the stop bar is in a position that you can see down the street. But in the proposed condition, sidewalk is wrapping around that corner and a crosswalk, the, the location of that crosswalk is changed and it's back. So the stop bar is back further on the westbound approach. So now a car sitting there to, to make a right can't see down the road, you know, sight distance good enough to make a good decision. So no right turn on red to keep them safe. We looked at, this is in the report too, we looked at double rights. We had a meeting with the city and they said, well, what if, what if we changed that to a left, a through and a right on the, the south lane? And then the one that's a designated right in our design, you know, stays a right. So now we have two right turns. Well, it didn't help at all. I think that's because the capacity of the, there's so many lefts already that rights didn't really get over there, and so it really didn't use both lanes. But also, because of the way the intersection is, we can't do an overlap. We can't run the right turns with a double right because there's lots of U-turns that happen at that intersection today. And those U-turns take up all that space. So we can't run an overlap in either, you know, the single right lane or the double right lane. So that loses its extra capacity that, that that extra lane would provide for those rights. That was something else we, we ended up looking at. We really did try to do as many improvements as we could and to, you know, to help have the intersections operate better. And they do, you know, with the improvements, they operate better than the no-build in 2032. So I guess basically, conclusion is our trip generation is conservative. We've got an extra 200 trips on the network that may, may not be there based on, you know, how we did our analysis. And then trip distribution, I hope we answered all of those questions for that. Again, that's kind of, you know, best judgment and decision-making and, you know, hard to, hard to figure out exactly that. And then traffic operations, we're an acceptable level of service B in the PM along the corridor, except for the Adventure Way and 20. Anyways, Saturdays, you know, the volumes on the network are way higher. The volumes on the network, they're, they're already, you know, over capacity. And it's not, it's going to have a little more traffic. It's going to have more traffic because of this project, but it's a Saturday and we want people to shop and we want people to, to visit your establishments along the corridor. So, and then Dick Anagnost explained about the mitigation and how that is going to make a big difference for this project and having this project come in and coordinate those, those signals with that equipment out there so the city is able to do counts and, and adjust timing right from their equipment. So I hope I answered everything.
Yeah, one more question for me. It just, and this has to do with phase two, because it just, it kind of, maybe it gives people, I don't know if solace is the right word. The proposed phase two as planned right now, is, is the, is it viable for the Fun World entrance exit to be constructed as part of phase two? Because here, I'm thinking out loud in my head, right? Let's say you come back for phase two and we have issues and we're not going to be willing to let you continue to use Adventure Way to exit for all of the phase two development. Is the Fun World exit, because essentially that would take a bunch of that westbound traffic to another exit, right, and alleviate Adventure Way. Is it, is it going to be viable during the phase two construction? Or do you see any impediments, save for dollars, but, you know, we, I don't, we're not talking about that here, to get that exit as part of phase two?
So Mr. Chair, to, to answer you sort of in a roundabout way first, if the Fun World entrance were in today, we wouldn't be having this conversation because there would be no bust in 2032
Right.
for the one hour on the Saturday. Until we know what phase two really looks like, we can't figure out if the Fun World exit will really be necessary or not. I mean, another thing I'd like to point out is that Costco's gas station is a members-only gas station. It's not open to the general public. Yet when we did this traffic study, we took Costco as a standalone, we took the gas station as a standalone, and we added them together for the purposes of these trip generations. Okay, that really isn't fair, because the majority of Costco customers that are going to get gas, yes, some may just go there for gas, but the majority of them are getting their gas and they're shopping at Costco at the same time. So we've double-counted everywhere in these things, and that's why I was pointing out that you guys get another bite at the traffic apple with phase two. And if the uses that we're projecting in phase two cause the actual failure to happen sooner, then yes, we're going to be forced to put in that third exit. That's really the answer to the question.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I was getting at, is because I, I, you know, I feel like it's, since this is a kind of planned development, understanding the potential options going forward are important for the public and the board as well. So that, you know, like I said, we, you know, I'm likening this to some of our larger developments on other places in Spit Brook, you know, where we've, we've had to deal with additional entrances at some point. But if there was some sort of, if you were here saying, there's no way I'm going to construct that Fun World exit with phase two, that might be a different calculus of our part.
We don't know that. We tried to choose the most conservative or the most high-impact generators, and we're building the mitigation for those high-impact generators now. If we got a big box, which they don't really exist any longer, user that had another really high-impact generator, then we would be forced to build the Fun World entrance because there would be no other way to mitigate it. Because we're already baking or into this deal, we've baked in the mitigation for phase two already. But you guys are going to actually see if this stuff works, because by the time we come back from phase two, all of this will have been executed and in place, and the new traffic study will tell us whether we were right or wrong.
In addition to that, there remains still the, I'll call it an opportunity for the levering entrance exit.
That's correct.
As well.
Yes.
Which would be kind of a fourth, if you will.
Yes, the levering exit would actually take you out to the, to the other light.
Right.
There's a significant amount of improvement for phase two and/or the train station that could be made to further improve the traffic coming in and out of the site.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. Mr. Marley?
Yes, I'm sorry, I had to rehash this point. But I just, the sort of boiling it down to the basic point about, you know, there's a failure in 2032, one hour, Saturday peak at Adventure Way, where you said level of service F. And just to confirm, that is accounting for the phase two traffic?
Yes.
So I'm assuming that if you take the phase two traffic out and only count the phase one traffic, you don't get to the level of service F?
So that would be in our analysis, that's the 2022 analysis is phase two. So it, are you, are you talking about during the week or are you talking about on Saturday?
Well, I'm talking about, the conclusion there was you had one hour during the Saturday peak in 2032 where you had a level of service F at the Adventure Way intersection. And so you confirmed that, yes, that, that is assuming the phase two traffic.
It's a level of service F in the no-build.
Okay.
On a Saturday. On a Saturday.
Yeah.
And again, it's because there's so much extra traffic out there on a Saturday compared to during the week. You know, 30 to 40% more traffic.
Okay. Other questions by the board? Mr. Hirsch.
I just have a question. I'm still trying to get my arms around the whole thing. The traffic coming down Spitbrook from the Everett Turnpike, it's going to obviously be diverted, makes it 36, takes it one with the new Costco going in there. How are you accounting for that? Is that accounted for in the, in the trip, in the trip analysis?
Yes, yes. The redistribution.
So is there going to be a big backup on?
So we didn't take the existing trap, Costco traffic off the network. So that means that on Spitbrook, there's a whole lot of rights from people that come off the Everett Turnpike and make a right today to go down Daniel Webster Highway, to get to the existing site. Those are still on the network. They're still doing that because that was the base condition.
But the.
But traffic distribution from everywhere put onto the network for the new one is determined by where they're coming from. And so, yes, ones that were, the ones that were at 35 exit, they're still there the way we did this. But the new, but all of the trips that are coming to Costco, that would be coming from that direction are, are coming off that ramp and down Spitbrook. Does that make sense? Because we didn't take off.
How much of backup will be at that intersection at Spitbrook? Would you have all the competing users down to the shaws and everything else in that whole area? How far will that backup?
It doesn't back up, it doesn't back up far enough to the next intersection.
It won't back up to the shaws?
No.
Because right now on a busy day, it'll back up to the shaws on a busy Saturday.
On a Saturday?
And your additional volume will, will.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I would have to sit down and pull out the table for that approach to, to tell you what that, that length is. But I don't know it off the top of my head and I didn't. Westbound Adventure Way was the one that everybody was.
No, I understand that.
Yelling about.
Focus in the discussion.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But to add on to Larry's discussion, the improvements in the timing of the corridor. Those should improve the throughput off of Spitbrook onto Daniel Webster as well.
Correct, correct.
So let's see, yeah, okay. Okay. Does that make sense, Larry?
Yeah.
Anyone else on the board? Okay. Hearing nothing else from the board at the moment, I'm going to go ahead and open to the public. Is there anybody in the audience, wish to speak opposition or concern, have a question of the plan? Come on up and remind you to state your name and address for the record. And go ahead and ask your questions or give your comments.
Good evening, Board. My name is Peter Messina. I reside at 1080 West Hollis Street in Ashwa. Anyone who has traveled down Spitbrook Road and turned left, they'll be heading towards the IHOP. If they turn right, they're heading towards the existing Pheasant Lane Mall, if I'm oriented correct. The very first intersection that pulls a left would have you going to TJ Maxx. That Shopping Plaza also used to have a Guitar Center and things like that in there. I believe there's a shopping center. Trader Joe's. Are we in the same.
Yep.
Frame of mind?
Yep.
I'd like to know when all these Costco new shoppers are exiting to the left, there's only like three or four cars, maybe five maximum, that can queue on that very first signal when you go into TJ Maxx. Now imagine an outflow of dozens of shoppers trying to catch that signal at any one time. You're, you're talking about a drain that's already been corked. Are there any mitigation strategies for opening up that corridor there? And I don't know what, you know, maybe they can buy the golf station, I don't know. And put more gas there, I, you know. I, I'm just concerned that this traffic study isn't comprehensive enough to include the bottleneck that's there right now. And if you're coming from point south in Massachusetts, naturally you're going to take exit 36 to get to Costco. It's more efficient to do that. But if my mission is to get to Costco and tank up on gas while I'm there, I'm going straight to Spitbrook. I'm not going to go Pheasant Lane Mall lights and all the other lights in between. Why? Time is money and I'm an old fart. I can't afford to lose time. So I'm, I'm wondering how they were, we're addressing these issues like that would jam people up, not now only on a Saturday, but every day of the week. Okay? The, the other concern I have is the, the, the other outlet. If you could put the plan view on the screen. They're showing a couple cars that can queue to make the left where the, where the new Costco gas station is going. So if you're heading from points north, naturally if you're taking exit two, and you don't want to go through that quagmire out Spitbrook Road, you would head south. And then make a left at that new Costco gas station location, yes? Adventure Drive was it called? If I'm looking, there may be eight cars or so in silhouette or the shadow of eight cars where that's proposed. Can that queuing line be extended?
Can, Linda, can you just dial in a little closer? Are you talking the pocket from, on, on Daniel Webster going south, turning left?
Don my mask and point to it for you.
Well, maybe Linda can point to it and you can just tell us if it's the right one.
Yeah, right, right there. I'm seeing, you see all those cars? There's eight cars there, yeah?
Yeah, that pocket is getting extended by.
All the way, all the way down there towards like W Black, in the middle?
Yeah, 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 that's.
So we're going to have 20 cars that can.
I'll have the applicant, but that's, that is one that's getting extended like a significant.
I'm coming from the north.
Yeah.
And if I want to frequent Costco, I don't want to have to be caught up in this Spitbrook Road corner there.
Yeah, that is definitely being extended significantly. And that's the, if you were listening to my discussion, there's even potential that in the future it could go further, yeah.
Begging the Board's pardon, are, are we on old business 0029 or 0062?
There's, so there's, there's three different cases that are all being heard together because they all relate to the same project.
Okay. That being the case, and I'd like to make it as brief as possible because everybody's here going to be late. Could I just ask of one question on 0062 and then we'll come up later?
I'm not sure which.
Oh, sorry, yeah, maybe I was confused. I thought you were referring.
Your 062 is up right now too. That's the, that's.
Yeah, okay.
That's the site plan for Costco, yeah.
Oh, okay. In so being, I noticed on the prints to the rear, there's only 17 handicap parking spaces on their plan, SPO1 or something like that.
Okay.
And I'd like to know, you know, if the minimum is 17 per their calculations, why are we going with the minimum as our population is aging? And I've got parents that have handicap plates, okay? So why are we going with the minimum? And if any of you here have a quad cab pickup truck, for example, 20 feet long, yeah, you can't fit that in a 20-foot-long garage. So they've got corridors that the minimum is 20 feet and they've extended it to 24 feet wide, okay? But that extra four feet would be socked upright with one pickup truck. Another pickup on, truck on the opposite end, okay, of the corridor. Now you've constricted it to 16 feet. So I, you know, realistically, you know, when I was a kid, a Cadillac Sedan DeVille was more than 20 feet long. Or a Mercury, you know.
Sure.
Station wagon was more than 20 feet long. So a parking space at 20 feet is rather, rather minimal as well. And then those, those corridors where customers have to pass by each other, quad cab pickup truck like most people frequent now is the, is the old, is the new station wagon. Put a trailer hitch on it, next thing you know, you've got people messing up fenders and rims, you know? So in the way of minimum accommodations for parking, I'd rather see less spaces, but more generous spaces. If that's possible. And maybe some extra provision for the handicap, especially on the west elevation of Costco. They don't even show a cart return for the customers on the west elevation.
Yeah, well, you can ask the applicant what their reasoning is behind that.
I, I put that for the public comment because as part of the public, I'd like to frequent new establishments.
Sure.
Okay? And if Costco's selling gas, wouldn't it be nice if you could take your electric car and charge it while you're shopping? You know, the Governor's Green Initiative, she puts forth certain plans and spent some time in, in southern states here recently. And I, and I've seen these nice overhangs where they got solar panels. And I'm sure Costco could make a penny or two selling electricity to some customers while they're charging their cars shopping. You know, if we're planning for 2032, I, I think we're going to have more of that kind of transportation available. And I wonder if that's going into the plans or any consideration if Costco wants to put a greener footprint down.
All right, we'll ask that as well.
Thank you, appreciate the time.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the audience wish to speak in opposition or concern, have a question of the plan? All right, anybody online?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Kelly Jordan Price from Hugley Allen Insider. I represent BJ's Wholesale Club, which recently approved, received approval to construct a gas station located on Adventure Way. I just want to make a couple of comments and then Sean Kelly from Vanessen Associates is here to speak with respect to some of the traffic issues. But at the last hearing that I was present at in August, Costco, or the applicant I should say, was, their traffic engineer was requested to submit a revised traffic study. And the Hoyle Tanner peer review comments were forthcoming. It was our expectation that the traffic study, the revised traffic study, as well as the comments to the peer review would be produced well in advance of tonight's hearing. So that we could all have an opportunity to meaningfully review everything and provide comments and questions at tonight's hearing. Unfortunately, shortly before midnight, and I didn't see this until this morning, the 600 and some page revised traffic report came in as well as the responses to the peer review. There just wasn't sufficient time to be able to review all of that. The other thing I want to note is that it's been made clear to us in connection with our submissions, that things have to get to the planning board by 5:00 PM on the day before the hearing, or they're not going to be considered. And that happened with a submission that we had made. It was made clear to us that it couldn't be considered until the next public hearing because it came after 5:00. So these materials came well after that 5:00 o'clock deadline yesterday. And I just would request that the public hearing not be closed tonight. So that BJ's, the peer reviewer for the city, and anybody else who's interested in the project would have ample time to review the additional materials that have been submitted. Thank you.
Great, Mr. Marley?
Yes, Chair, I just, I, I do want to clarify the record before we go, for the record, before we go any further. My view as a member of this board is that what we requested at, at the last meeting was not the submission of a revised traffic report. Instead, we requested that the applicant make their traffic engineer available so that we could discuss the issues that had been raised by, by the abutter and by the city's engineer. And, and that's the discussion that we, we wanted to have tonight and I think we have had tonight. So I just did want to clarify that that's, that's not the request that was made by the board at the last meeting.
Okay. Okay. Do we have, I think, somebody from Vaness that wanted to speak?
Yes.
Yep.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Sean Kelly with Vanessen Associates. You know, just to echo Kelly's comments, you know, I, I received this document, the first time I saw it was this afternoon. And it's, it is a large document, it's, you know, 600 pages. Based on some of the information presented tonight, it looks as though some of the findings are different than what was presented previously. So we haven't had a chance, you know, to give this a thorough technical review. And certainly we'd like that opportunity to do that on behalf of our client. But I would like to speak, if, if the board would allow me, on, on some of the things that were said tonight and just provide some clarification because I, I do think that's important. And we were also able to review the, the Hoyle Tanner's latest peer review letter, which quite frankly, you know, echoed a number of the concerns that we've raised during, as part of our letters that we've submitted to the board to date. If it's possible, you know, I'll, I'll try to just go through them point by point. And I know it's, it's been a long night, I'm not going to take, you know, too much time. But you know, there was, tonight, there was a lot of discussion on the fact that the Costco building that was there, the trips weren't, you know, eliminated from the, from the analysis. You know, quite frankly, that's standard industry practice. You know, it's an existing building, it has a right to be occupied by a retail tenant. It, it's sound industry practice to assume that, you know, what goes in there is going to generate traffic and may not even need an approval to, to occupy that space. So, you know, anytime we do a project, you know, we've done, you know, half dozen Walmarts where they, you know, leave the building and move down the street to get a larger space for grocery. We always maintain those trips in the network because ultimately, you know, something's going to occupy that space. So I, I think it's, it was done correctly. And as I understand it, that was the direction the city gave in the scoping meeting was to keep those trips in there. But, but certainly it's nothing out of the ordinary and it wasn't conservative, it's just standard practice that's, that's, that's prudence. There were some comments relative to, you know, the, the trip generation. And I think the, the, the message that was relayed to the board tonight was that, you know, number one, you know, we, they use the, the ITE data, which was more conservative, you know, than just using Costco data. You know, and the number two, I think, and this came out late, was that, you know, these volumes have been double counted. In other words, that you're, they're adding gas station trips, you know, and Costco trips. So they're really double counting customers that would, you know, it'd be the same customer, if you will. And frankly, that simply isn't the case. You know, when, when you look at what they did for the Saturday midday, you know, they used 230 trips for the gas station, which is based on the ITE. And we certainly recognize that, they use that data. But they also provided some empirical data they had collected at existing Costco facilities that they used to generate what they, what their internal capture was. And what that data showed, which was actual Costco data, is that the gas station actually did about 292 trips on average, when you looked at four different sites versus the 230 they used. And in some cases, you know, it ranged as high as 385 trips on a Saturday for the Costco fueling facility. So in essence, the numbers they used based on ITE were on average 27% lower than the data they supplied from Costco. And where, in some cases were as high as 67% lower. So we, we certainly don't feel that it was conservative in any regard as far as the Costco gas on Saturday. In fact, the own data, the own data they supplied showed that the actual Costco operations, you know, do a lot more trips, in, in some cases significantly more trips. As far as the double counting, again, that simply wasn't the case. You know, they took a, a very heavy credit for internal trips, about 50%. So basically they said half of these gas station trips are coming from Costco, so they're not new. So they weren't even counted as a new trip on the corridor, except for the fact that it's going to the store. And then they also took a healthy pass-by percentage trip where they said these trips are already on Daniel Webster Highway. So I just want the board to be aware that it, it isn't double counting to the extent that, you know, it was, it was relayed to the board. In fact, you know, we feel that the numbers are low with respect to what the empirical data showed. And there was also a heavy reduction taken for pass-by and internal. The next, you know, and I, I think the important thing too to point out is, you know, if you, if you follow the math that was presented tonight to you, I think what, what ultimately the, the conclusion was is that, you know, Costco is, is moving this facility down the street. They're building this whole new facility, they're building a gas station to draw 14 to 22 new customers an hour. You know, I'm not a retailer and I don't know what the projected sales, you know, margins are and what they're trying to get for a decreased customer, you know, traffic when you build a new facility. But I would, I would suspect they're not building this facility and, and moving down the road and building this gas station to get 14 to 22 new customers an hour coming to the store to get gas. The big issue, one of the big issues, and if I can share my screen, that might be helpful, if the board doesn't mind. But you know, what, I think one of the major issues, and I know we've talked about it tonight, you know, for quite a bit of time, is, is the issue of the distribution. You know, and, and quite frankly, I know that they've been, they've made a, a large effort to sell the Spitbrook Road entrance as the main entrance to this facility. And certainly, you know, we will provide access to the gas station pumps and also to the, to the self-storage facility. But this is the Costco parking lot. This is the primary field that people are going to park. This is the primary drive aisle that goes north-south that leads into the fields that would be most occupied by Costco customers. It literally lines directly up with Adventure Way. It's literally the most direct route to Daniel Webster Highway. I mean, we can talk about the Spitbrook Road entrance as the, as a primary entrance, but, but the reality is, this is the front door. When you're in Daniel Webster Highway looking, you want to get to the Costco parking lot, this is the most direct route. There, there's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. It's, this is. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it, it's, this is about point one miles. And then if you went the, what I call the great circle route, where you continued south on Daniel Webster Highway through the congestion, had to go to another light, you know, come through here, go past this facility, go through the friction of the gas station, past the loading areas. I just, you know, I don't believe, and quite frankly, neither does your consultant, that people are going to do that, they're going to make this maneuver here. And if you look at the review comments issued by your consultant, I mean, they literally say, you know, I'll quote it verbatim, "We find it unreasonable to assume that drivers destined for Costco traveling from the north would travel south all the way to the Spitbrook Road intersection." This isn't a comment we made, this is a comment that your city's consultant made, Hoyle Tanner, in their review of these arguments. So this isn't, you know, a competitive thing where we don't want competition, it's quite frankly, that it just doesn't make sense. And again, when you look at the map, I can't for the life of me imagine why anyone would choose to not make this maneuver here and would instead drive seven times the distance through all this friction, through another light, through the fueling area, behind the loading, to get to an area you can get through this movement here. So that's a concern we have, and again, your consultant echoes it. We actually believe it's even more, quite frankly, off in the exiting movements. And what I'll do is, I want to show you that, and this is just the phase one traffic, and these are, these are the applicant's numbers. But, and I'll just kind of walk you through it, but the numbers that are in, that are non-in parentheses are the PM peak, and the numbers that are in parentheses are the Saturday peak. So there's a large amount of traffic that is assumed to either go south on Daniel Webster Highway or go, you know, Daniel Webster Highway to Spitbrook to get to the interchange. In the PM peak, there's a total of 193 exiting movements from Costco in the gas station alone, this is not phase two, this is just phase one. Out of the 193 vehicles that would either go south on Daniel Webster or go up Spitbrook, they have 183 going out Spitbrook and 10 going out the Adventure Way. So, you know, out of almost 200 vehicles that are leaving that parking lot that directly connects to Adventure Way, you know, they're going to say that 190 are going to go out Spitbrook, but only 10, only 10 an hour. And similarly, you have the same situation on the Saturday, where you have an even larger volume, it's 293 vehicles exit, and this is just phase one, this isn't the phase two traffic, that are either going to go south on Adventure Way, or rather, Daniel Webster, or go on to Spitbrook. Out of 293 vehicles, only 14 are assumed to go on, onto Adventure Ways, that means heading south. And it's ironic, because when you look at the phase two traffic, they don't make those assumptions, they don't assume everyone's going to drive around, even though they share basically the same parking lot. They assume they're going to come out Adventure Way because it's the most common route, and we believe that that is the case, that that's going to be more utilized. The problem is that, you know, when you make these assumptions and you just say, "Well, if it doesn't work, you know, we'll figure it out down the road, and we'll see if it works, and if it doesn't work, then we, you know, we'll deal with it later." You know, BJ's doesn't have that, you know, ability to change their access, or to, you know, move their driveway down, or to make any meaningful mitigation, make it work. If this doesn't work, you know, they don't have access to their site, if their driveway is consistently blocked and people can't get in and out, it kills their business. So it's not something that I think, you know, you can just say, "Well, we'll look at it down the road and see how it operates." Quite, I would recommend that you follow your own consultant's guidance and say, "Change the distribution model, put more cars in that left turn lane." And I believe also put more cars leading on Adventure Way, because I don't think it's reasonable to assume that out of almost 200 vehicles heading southbound, either to go to the interchange or further south, that only 10 of them are going to go up that driveway, onto Adventure Way, to make, to hit Daniel Webster Highway. There was some comments tonight about the impact of operations, but I think sometimes these things get a little clouded because focus on the overall intersection operations, and certainly, the overall intersection operations are important. But from BJ's perspective, what we're really concerned about, you know, is Adventure Way, because that's our only means of access to get southbound. You know, we don't have a full access curb cut onto Daniel Webster Highway. Everyone that wants to get south, whether they're going to Route 3, or they're going to, you know, further points south towards the mall, they have to come out in Adventure Way. And when you look at, and again, I brought this chart up at the last meeting, this is not our chart, this is a chart that was done by the applicant that was included in a legal document that was submitted as part of, before the last hearing. And I just want to draw your attention to these numbers. So, and again, a lot of these numbers are apples to oranges, so even here, it's painting a little rosier picture than it should. But this is basically what we call the no-bill condition with the pedestrian phase. So the pedestrian phase has not been stripped out, so this is actually a worse scenario than they're analyzing when they look at their bill condition. But what it shows is that that left turn from Adventure Way, when you don't have the Costco facility in the future Saturday peak is going to wait 65 seconds, so it's not a great situation. You're waiting a little over a minute, as it is, to make that left-hand turn off Adventure, but it's still what we call a level of service E, it's not a failing condition. With just phase one, even with their improvements, so here it is right here, 120-second cycle, no pedestrian phase, so this is already less than conservative because there may be pedestrian crossings, and they've optimized everything, that 65 goes to 135 seconds. So someone that waits in that corridor today for, you know, a little over a minute is now waiting more than two minutes. When the phase two traffic comes in, and again, this is their mitigated condition, this is not, you know, this is what, this is with their improvements in place, the delay goes to 180 seconds. So you go from waiting a little over a minute on Adventure Way to make a left, to waiting over two minutes just with Costco, to waiting three minutes with phase two. I mean, you can imagine how much that traffic is going to back up in queue when you have traffic building up three minutes before you can turn off that corridor. And ultimately, what their analysis had shown before, and again, I haven't had the opportunity to review these documents, I wasn't up at midnight, but the analysis they had shown before said that the queues on Adventure Way, independent of their projects, were about 89 feet on average on a Saturday, which would not block the BJ's driveway. And then the prior analysis had shown those queues went to 266 feet on average, which does block the driveway, and then 402 feet as a max, which significantly blocks the driveway. Now, there may be additional analyses they've done, we haven't had the opportunity to review them because it came in so late. But the analysis that was submitted the last hearing showed that the queues on Adventure Way were going to triple because of just the phase one traffic, and certainly would be further exacerbated with phase two. So, you know, our comments, you know, remain the same, we don't believe the distribution models are accurate, we don't believe that out of 200 vehicles leaving that parking lot, only 10 of them are going to go up Adventure Way. We don't believe anyone is going to, you know, drive the great circle route and drive seven tenths of a mile when they can make the immediate left and get right to the parking lot, and your own consultant has, you know, echoed that concern on a number of occasions now, and it simply has been ignored. I mean, at the very least, I think there should be a sensitivity analysis done that says, "Well, what if your assumptions are wrong? What if they do come in on Adventure Way? What if more do go in Adventure Way?" What does that do versus saying, "We just can't figure it out, you know, it's not water, and if it doesn't work, we'll figure it out down the road." I mean, these are the analyses that need to be conducted to show what happens if these assumptions are wrong. And given the fact that your consultant has raised the same concerns regarding the distribution, I think it's important that these get done, you know, before the hearings is closed, before we have an opportunity to see what that impact is. That's really all I have for tonight, but again, these are the same concerns we've raised, you know, the first letter, the second letter, the third letter, and our fourth letter that was just submitted, and they just continue to not be addressed. And again, it's not only our firm that's representing BJ's, it's your consultant that's raising these same issues. That's all I have, I'll turn it back to the board, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think there's still, there we go. Anybody else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned or have a question on the plan? Go ahead and unmute and state your name.
Hi, I'm Lori Greer from SkyVenture New Hampshire, my husband and I own SkyVenture New Hampshire. I spoke last time, we are the only business on Adventure Way, and we fully support the Costco project. BJ's gas station and CVS do have access to DW Highway, which we do not, we are kind of landlocked in our facility. I do have, like, when you're talking about the traffic study, I do have a suggestion, actually, somebody brought it up. You know, honestly, I do drive that quarter every day, going back and forth to work. Weekends sure are busier than the weekdays, that's true, but it's certainly not crazy busy, unless you're talking Christmas time. The, one suggestion I have to the city actually would alleviate that left turn is if you guys got rid of the U-turn there. Honestly, people need to learn to drive, and sometimes, you know, they'll start partway in, and then they'll stop, and then they might not make the turn, or they're super slow on the turn. So if you really wanted to think about unplugging that intersection, you know, guaranteeing that it moves smoothly, I would suggest, instead of signs about telling people where to turn, get rid of, get rid of that, make it a no-U-turn. Costco, unless I'm understanding something differently, Costco is a club, you pay to be a club member, you're either a Costco member, a BJ's member, a Sam's member, I'm actually a member of all three. So it doesn't really change much, the traffic is moving from one location in essence to another, and it's not like the project that was already approved for there years ago, where it was all kinds of retail and restaurants, and would have brought in traffic from all over, not people that are just coming to visit Costco. So I really don't, you know, feel that there's an error, you know, like, there's a problem there. Like, some of the traffic studies that were talked about before, I don't feel are realistic. The traffic that goes down there, a lot of the traffic that goes into CVS in Best Buy come off of DW and actually boot out DW. Mr. Kelly, the lawyer there, made a comment that kind of struck me, and he said, "This isn't a competitive thing." I think one of the planning board members said it best last week when they said, "This is, you know, Goliath, you know, the clash of the Titans, I truly believe it is." Or Mr. Kelly wouldn't be here talking tonight, defending BJ's for their gas station that they put on the corner. We did submit a letter to you guys, I hope that you received it, about our comments and what we felt we need to address. BJ's, honestly, we did talk about in the letter, doesn't seem to care about the traffic on Adventure Way because they're currently always blocking our driveway, I've had to call the city, I've asked the guy multiple times. So for a company that's talking about traffic so much, they should practice it themselves. Last but least, like I said before, we are the only business on Adventure Way. We look forward to this Costco project, we really hope that the board will vote this project through. We feel that it could be extremely helpful for our business, especially in these challenging times, to put some more traffic by our facility, since we get nothing but weeds in our checks right now. We do sit 25 feet lower in elevation from the current DW Highway, so, you know, visibility is nice, there's no business out there that wouldn't want traffic going by their place. So, again, we hope that you vote for it, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask me. If you'd like me to jot down how many cars are at that intersection every time I drive there, I'd be happy to do that.
This is Rob Greer, I'm also jumping in here. Mr. Kelly also mentioned that he saw no logical reason why somebody would ever turn right off of Adventure Way to get onto the highway southbound. In reality, that is actually the fastest way to the highway southbound. Jump on the bypass right in front of Tully, you can go either north or south right there. There are numerous times where, on my way to the post office, I will bypass the very first stoplight to take the second stoplight and drive the extra three-quarters of a mile or mile, or however long it is, because it'll save me 20 minutes to get where I want to go. This is obviously during the holiday rush season, so there are plenty of times where that will happen. That's all I've got.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else wishing to speak opposition, concern, or favor, or have a comment on the plan? Okay, hearing done, at this point, we would, the procedure would have the opportunity for the applicant to provide a rebuttal to the public comment. Just as a reminder, there was some questions regarding the distribution again, there was some questions, there was a couple of questions about the parking, maybe you could just hit that quick.
Sure.
And maybe just talk to the, just for the, there was a member here in the public that was looking for a little bit more about the extent of the traffic study, how far you went.
Sure.
And the mitigation measures, you know, impact on the Spitbrook intersection.
Sounds good, I'll address some of these, and then I'll hand it over to some of the rest of the team to handle some of the more technical, maybe traffic-related ones. But I'll knock off some of the easy ones, so the handicap spaces, so they are oversized, they're 10 feet wide by 20 feet. Those are larger than what's required by the ADA, and we have 24-foot aisles, so Costco, you know, does like them having oversized. We also have oversized the adjacent aisles, they're all 10 feet wide, those only need to be eight or five, they're all 10 feet. So we're significantly oversized in the handicap spaces. To reiterate some of the points that we brought up, the, you know, why we provided items late, again, the traffic impact study, the full assembled impact study, that was asked for us in the HTA letter, which was provided to us Wednesday. So we've had, you know, we just got that a week ago, so that's why we assembled everything and we provided it. Mr. Varley made a good point that, you know, the purpose of us coming back today was to bring the traffic expert to discuss the specific concerns that have been brought up in, you know, the repeated letters from some of the Yabutters. The distribution question, you know, he pointed out that the city's traffic consultant asked the question about the distribution. Again, we've, you know, addressed that in written comments, and we've addressed it verbally today. We stand by our trip distribution of two-thirds, one-third. The comment, you know, that he couldn't understand why anyone would ever bypass a long queue to go around to the second entrance is illogical to me. I drive this, I live two miles from here, I come down to this area. Webster Square, like we said, has a sign that says, "Use the two exits, use the two left turns." So if you pull up and you see a very long left-turn queue, if you see that whole pocket, but you see the green light, most, a lot of people will use that, so we stand by the detailed presentation that Linda made regarding our trip distribution there. Driveway blockages was one concern. Again, we are providing a do-not-block, this is at about 200 feet back. The majority of the time, as we mentioned, you know, everyone is, everyone's upset about Saturday PM peak, which is the midday peak. During the weekday peaks, these function as a D, these function in perfectly acceptable levels. So all of these complaints about the queues, about the backing up, about the blockages, that's all real, and really, it's about 15 minutes on a Saturday that everyone's complaining about. So as Linda made the point on multiple occasions, you're really looking at two totally different scenarios. One is Saturday that has, you know, 20 to 40% more traffic than the rest of the week. On the PM peaks, it functions fine. You know, to help mitigate that 15 minutes where that queue is expected to come past, we put this do-not-block. They complained about, you know, long queues for their vehicles leaving their gas station. This do-not-block allows vehicles to get out of their gas station as well. So even if the queue goes back beyond that, their vehicles can get out as soon as they pull up. That queue starts to leave, that do-not-block allows vehicles to leave. So they're not, their traffic isn't even waiting in the entire queue if, if in that 15 minutes on a Saturday that that queue does back up past their entrance. I think, you know, like I said, we kind of beat to death, you know, those three concerns that were reiterated by the Yabutters. I don't know if Linda or Dick wants to talk in any more detail.
Maybe someone can comment on the U-turn suggestion by the Yabutter?
Yeah, there's, in the 2020 base, there's 91 U-turns there. So there is a significant amount of U-turns today there. So if you made that a no-U, you know, don't allow U-turns there, you're taking out 91 cars in that peak hour. How many that is each cycle, I don't know, and we can figure that out, but it is, it's a pretty good amount of cars, you know. And that U-turn, when a car makes that U-turn, they use the whole road. So again, if you took out that U-turn, you could put in an overlap. When the northbound and southbound vehicles are making their left turns, that right turn could get out. So that would help the function of the intersection along the westernly approach, the westbound approach. It would give more time, and especially since now we have it as an exclusive right, you know, they would really be able to clear out.
So is it your, I mean, I know you haven't had a lot of time to think on this, but is it your professional opinion that getting rid of that U-turn is a good idea? Is there unintended consequences on Daniel Webster that getting rid of that could cause?
So why is that U-turn there now? Right? If you're not going to allow that U-turn there, are you causing people to go down and make a U-turn somewhere else? Are you causing people then to pull into Royal Ridge Mall and then move around that way? So I guess first, we'd have to figure out, you know, why and where, what, what's causing those ninety-one cars to make that U-turn that we're now going to restrict them from? But what I can say is it would in- it would improve the operations of the intersection, because we could do the overlap, which would increase, um, would give, you know, more green time for those rights and clear out that queue for tho- that right lane.
Yeah, I mean, I think, and maybe this is a question for Dan, but I, I think, you know, in the development of sort of Walgreens in the malls, the linear, I think is the name of the developer, malls that are beside it, we did add cross-access through those. Those have all been connected now. You can go from Walgreens per se all the way to, to Spit Brook, you know? Um, that wasn't the case, you know, years ago before the development of, of those other malls. I'm wondering if some of the U-turning is, is people trying to get to, you know, um, sort of the restaurant in that mall area?
Yeah, I think, I think it's the housing developments on the west side of DW. You know, there's raised median for a good portion. So they come out of there, and if they want to go north on DW, they need a place to reverse direction, because they can't do that leaving their driveway. So that's why there's such a high number.
Yeah. Got it.
Yeah, that's, that's the reason.
Yeah, so it's the ones coming this way, yeah.
Is there a way to open up access to that development, to the driveway at, um, Royal Ridge Mall? To get them to the signalized intersection from a backdoor?
I don't know.
Good. I believe that's all private property, so that would be something that they would have to work out, uh, within the properties.
Okay.
But certainly that would be beneficial for access to the corridor.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, probably a tangent, but I just think it's worth, worth talking about since, uh, one of the Butters brought it up. Mr. Varley?
Mr. Chair, just, I, I know we talked a lot about, um, distribution of trips, but I did just want to go to the re- sort of the reverse of what we spent a lot of time talking about, I think, which was the distribution of trips coming into the site.
Mm-hmm.
The engineer from VAS raised the issue of the distribution of trips out of the site.
Yep.
So I wonder if you could just very briefly speak to that and sort of the basis for those assumptions?
If I'm leaving the site, and I'm going to any place south of it, or I want to get on the highway, I'm going to go through Spit Brook intersection with a straight shot to the highway. I'm not going to go down Adventure Way, sit in a light cycle there to go down Daniel Webster, sit in the light cycle at Daniel Webster and Spit Brook to make a right. And that's what he's saying they will do. And I'm saying, they're going to go the straightest route. They're going to come out and go down Spit Brook Road. We now open it up, so there's an additional through lane there to get out. So that makes more sense to me. So out of those ten cars, where are they going? If they're not going to the highway, and they're not going to someplace else south, where are they going?
Right, I guess just, just-
If they're going to Massachusetts, aren't you going to get on the highway?
No.
You're going to go down, down-
Highway down to exit thirty-six.
I can't get on at exit one?
They go the way the current Costco people head towards Massachusetts. They head south of DW Highway, then catch the entrance ramp onto the highway, or continue straight into Tinsborough.
Okay.
And sorry, just to, to follow up. So I, I think that he was suggesting that, that something like ninety percent of the trips you have going south, and just to clarify, but that's just, those are just the trips you're assuming are going southbound. Right? So the northbound trips are presumably distributed-
To the right turn lanes.
To the right turn lane.
To the right turn lane on Adventure Way. Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any further, yeah, and, and I know you're in your rebuttal, so that's okay, you can keep going with that.
Yeah, this, um- This is the traffic engineer for Costco.
Yeah, it's just, uh, I wanted to introduce myself. I was asked to get up and talk a little bit about the research.
Can you just teach, yeah, name and address for the record, please?
Certainly, uh, so it's Thirty Independence Boulevard, Warren, New Jersey.
Yeah.
Um, I'm principal of Atlantic Traffic and Design Engineering. Uh, we've worked for Costco for over twenty years. I've worked on sites from Florida to Nashua and New Hampshire. Um, probably fifty sites or so.
So, sorry, he's just, I'm, I'm hearing, he, we just didn't get your name for the record just-
Oh, I'm so sorry, John Harter, H-A-R-T-E-R.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, and I, I'm a licensed civil engineer in multiple states. So we've, we've spent many years working for Costco. Um, many of the sites that Costco has in the northeast, in particular, are older sites and do not have gas stations. So we often have applications, like our office did work on the site down the street to the south for a number of years on the gas addition. And, you know, there were, that was, there were issues with that, did not go forward. Um, but we've done research, uh, very detailed research at four sites, and that's what we provided, uh, to Linda with her studies, just to give a background and, and, and understanding of the, the gas operations at a Costco. Um, as the objector had pointed out, um, they are very busy gas facilities. I mean, that's why they have eighteen fueling positions. Uh, it's a, it's an important part of the Costco business. Uh, so just to talk in terms of a peak hour, uh, we did look at four sites in, in a lot of detail for Costco and the gas facilities. And one in Columbia, Maryland, Staten Island, New York, Enfield, Connecticut, Riverhead, New York. And what, what you do find, they're very busy sites, but we did detailed interviews of the go- the gas customers. And this is the only way you can figure out what traffic, the trips are passed by or new to a site. And the other important component of a Costco facility is what members are both going, doing shared trips to both the Costco warehouse and the gas facility. So it's a, it's a little bit hard to understand when you, when, the way it was described by the objector, but on a Saturday, for example, we did find on average from these four sites, in a peak hour, approximately two-hundred-and-ninety trips generated at, at a gas station for Costco. But of that, fifty-five percent were internal capture. They were also going to the warehouse. So the idea is that they would have also, and even if the gas wasn't there, they would already have been on site. And then further, we looked at, of the fuel-only trips, um, we, we broke those out by whether they were, they were passed by already on the road network. So for example, a northbound trip on, um, Daniel Webster Highway would turn right in, get gas, and then continue north. They're already in, in the area. That was thirty percent of the Saturday trips. And the remainder is new trips, which we refer to in traffic engineering, or primary trips. And that fifteen percent component turns out to be, uh, the, the, the number of, um, twenty-two vehicles, twenty-two in, twenty-two out, are new completely to the network. So that, that's, just want to give some clarity on the gas stations and how they operate. So, thank you.
All right. Any, any questions from, from the board? Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Did you have a question?
Once again, I'll remember this time Dick Anegost for the record. Um, so I guess I'm batting cleanup, and I'm going to do a quick wrap-up for you, and I won't belabor any of the points, but, you know, with respect to six hundred pages being dumped the night before, ninety percent of it has been submitted through other hearings. We were asked to compile it all into one place and summarize it, and that's what the six hundred pages represent. So the majority of it has been reviewed already and re-reviewed and reviewed two or three times. The second thing I'd like to point out is, whenever you have opposing forces, traffic engineers aren't any different than lawyers. They're all going to have a different opinion, and they're all going to color that opinion in the light most favorable to their client. Again, I reiterate, Phase Two isn't being built yet. We're building all of the mitigations, so this board will get another bite at the apple and will be able to determine whether or not those traffic improvements are working and working accurately before Phase Two gets built, even though that, those traffic numbers are built in. And to reiterate, Linda, all of the people on the Spit Brook side have one-hundred percent in Spit Brook, and all the people on the Adventure Way side have one-hundred percent on the Adventure Way. So therefore, we've baked in a lot of trips on Adventure Way that aren't going to happen. At least initially. And not before you get another chance to look at a traffic study. I'd like to point out that we have significant support from our Butters. You have letters of, um, um, support from Levering and, and the young lady that was speaking tonight. Uh, Warden and Webster Square worked with us hand in glove in order to solve the drainage issues that are going on down there. They're not created by our site, but are created by the Butters that are already dumping on our site. And the flooding and everything else that gets resolved is, is, um, a result of our improvements. So I'd like to point out that the Butter is the competitor, but I won't go down that road. Traffic is good. The reason we have a vibrant corridor is because of the traffic that counts that we have. BJ's located here because of the traffic count. Costco has been here forever. BJ's is new to the party. They locate it here because of the amount of traffic that they have, that we have. So I guess I'd like to put a positive spin on everything. We've been in the weeds because of the drainage, no pun intended. We've been in the weeds because of the traffic, okay? But let's take a step back and take a ten-thousand-foot view as to the public bene- benefit of this project. Good projects are really hard to find when there's a significant amount of public benefit. So the first major public benefit is that we're maintaining a good corporate citizen in Costco. The second one is, due to the size and magnitude of the project, there'll be a significant increase to the tax base with little demand on the services. We're making significant traffic upgrades in the first phase that actually covered two phases, instead of the opportunity in the next phase to make additional traffic mitigation improvements. We're absorbing the cost of what Mr. Hudson described as the, uh, physical timing benefits and the other benefits to making the corridor flow more quickly. We are solving the drainage problem that is partially the city's and partially Warden's and partially occurred by other Butters at the bottom of Spit Brook, and upgrading all of the drainage in that area. We have the potential, and we've offered to make a significant donation of land to the city for a train station. We are taking a brownfield site that was contaminated, that's been vacant for almost thirty years, and making it usable again after cleaning it up, doing the mitigation, and attracting Costco to the site, in addition to the other benefits of the other businesses that may locate there. I won't get into it heavily, but Costco's a job creator, as will be all of the other businesses that locate to this site. So there's a significant job creation component here. I guess all of that coupled together, are we really going to, um, continue to debate what's going to happen in two thousand thirty-two for fifteen minutes to an hour at the intersection of Adventure Way, when realistically, when other improvements come in, additional traffic mitigation may be necessary? So kind of doing a cost-benefit analysis or a pros and cons analysis, the pros of this project far outweigh any cons that could be considered. And therefore, I'd like to turn it back over to the board for any que- last questions to us, and then allow you to go forward and deliberate or whatever you need to do.
Okay, thanks. Uh, other questions from the applicant by the board? So, um, while you're up there, um, just, so regarding signage, like, that I talked about earlier, you know, additional signs in the pocket on, uh, the southbound, um, left turn from Daniel Webster, internal signage, you know, indicating that people, if you want to head to, to, um, Route Three South, go this way to Spit Brook and stuff, there, there's no opposition?
If you were to see fit to make it a condition, we would accommodate that condition.
Okay, all right. Uh, Mr. Meehan?
Mr. Chairman, is this an appropriate time to ask about the memo that came from the Conservation Commission? And, and point out a couple of concerns? Are we, are we focusing on traffic still at this point?
Um, that's a new memo, so I think you can, if you have a question on that that you'd like the applicant to address, I think they have the right people in the room to, to ask that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ha- ha- has the applicant seen the memo from the Conservation Commission and any response to the specific concern that they had raised?
Uh, was it from the Lower Merrimack River?
Yes.
Okay, we did see that, yep.
Can you, go ahead and state your name and just respond if you want.
Trying to find it in my pile.
Okay, yeah, so, yeah, they're all American.
So it's the same, one of them was, um-
Just hit your name again, just so-
Uh, sorry, Brian Pratt, Fussin' O'Neill.
Thanks.
Um, one of them, they continue to ask us to infiltrate the full hundred-year storm, which is impractical. We're infiltrating the two-year storm, which is more than enough to provide, uh, stormwater treatment. Uh, there was a question about drainage from BJ's. Um, they were under the impression that the BJ's gas station wasn't providing any, um, stormwater treatment, but the, that project did in fact provide some underground infiltration. So, um, I believe, I haven't studied it in detail, but I believe their drainage report, um, met the city's ordinance. So I think that point is moot. Um, hundred-year floodplain, so their, one of their complaints was, they wanted us to raise the building higher. Um, they were under the impression that we were, um, close to the hundred-year flood of the Merrimack River, which is not true. We're much higher than the flood of the Merrimack River. Spit Brook Road, uh, s- sorry, Spit Brook has a floodplain that travels, uh, it steps up with the contour of the river. So, um, they were comparing the floodplain elevation of the river, uh, the, the little Spit Brook versus the floodplain. So we're much higher than the actual river. Um, and we are higher than the Spit Brook floodplain. So I'm confident that the hundred-year flood will not enter the building even with, uh, climate change. I think those were the, the comments. Was there, do you have it handy? Was there anything I missed?
The last one was regarding pedestrian access to the Merrimack.
We don't have pedestrian access. There's a railroad separating, um, our site from the river. Um, East Spit Brook does have a city right-of-way that comes on, that, um, will continue to be a city right-of-way. So we have no control over pedestrian access through the railroad. There is a drainage easement, but there's no pedestrian easement. So that would have to be something that would be taken up between, um, you know, with the railroad directly.
Thanks.
Uh, other questions by the board? Or in the hearing, for staff or for the applicant? Mr. Ballinger?
Um, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, uh, actually a question for, for Mr. Hudson. Um, we've, we've heard the sixty-seven thousand dollar amount, uh, talked about. Is, is there a derivation or rationale behind that, that number?
Sure, and I, uh, for the board's information, uh, Senior Traffic Engineer Wayne Husband is in the audience tonight too, so... Wayne, you want to take that question? And perhaps Wayne can give a little background too. I mean, uh, we've talked extensively about what that would involve, what that effort would involve. Um, but there's a bunch of other efforts that the city's been undertaking on the corridor, and Wayne can kind of give us a background of what we've been doing and plan to do on DW Highway.
Great, thanks.
Wayne Husband, Senior Traffic Engineer, City of Ashua. Um, actually, I'd like to back up a little bit and just talk about DW Highway and Spit Brook Road and some of the, uh, more recent things that we have going on, just to begin with, some background. First of all, we spent a lot of time down on DW Highway recently, like assessing the condition of the corridor, some of our, um, traffic signals and so forth. And what we can say is that, um, a lot of our, um, traffic controllers have been replaced recently. We took out the old NASDAQ traffic controllers, and we, we replaced them all up and down DW Highway and Spit Brook Road with the, uh, new Eagle brand, uh, traffic controllers. And those are the brains of the, uh, the traffic signal cabinets and the, uh, um, the reason that we did that is because we have a citywide traffic management system. And, um, when we have good communications at our traffic signals, the, um, we can actually, um, see and program things remotely from, um, a PC, you know, from the traffic technician or the traffic manager can make changes in the field. So we, we, not only do, do we have a lot of, um- So, we, not only do we have a lot of that going on, but we've recently replaced all the communication switches in the cabinets. Those, that's a pretty expensive undertaking as well, all twenty signal cabinets on Spitbrook Road and DW Highway. We also assess the traffic communications in general up and down both corridors, and we, we have all fiber optic communications down there, and we've done an assessment of where we don't have communications so that we can bring, I think we have three more traffic signal cabinets on DW Highway that don't have good working fiber optic communications, so we have a plan underway and we're working on that as well. Another thing that we should talk about is the traffic signal detection. A lot of the traffic signal detection, particularly on DW Highway, has reached the end of its useful life. Most of it was underground moves, but we do have a lot of old cameras down there. We've recently replaced four of the major intersections down there with the new overhead three hundred and sixty degree overhead camera detection, and so we're, we're working towards improving all the vehicle detection on DW Highway. We actually have four more signalized intersections slotted for improvement along DW Highway in the very near future that we have escrowed from last year's money. And I should mention in closing about what we have going on down there, that a lot of the time-of-day programs and day-of-week programs that we have for Spitbrook Road and DW Highway, they're still in place, but a lot of that, a lot of those traffic signals are based upon traffic volume data that's over twenty years old, so a lot has changed over twenty years. The reason it's twenty years old, because we made the changes probably seventeen years ago, but obviously you collect the data in advance, you do a lot of planning, you got your preliminary and file and design, and it's old, it's stale, so we do need to do some new data collection analysis and update the time-of-day and day-of-week programming. So, at some point, the Planning Board will make a decision whether or not they want to approve the project that's before them this evening, and what I'd like to do is assure the Planning Board that, as far as the city staff is concerned, that if they should find to approve the project at some point, that we believe that we're getting adequate and appropriate traffic mitigation for the impacts that are being generated by the proposed development. Now, having said that, we're talking about traffic mitigation, we're talking about, you know, the future improvements that you've heard about at Adventure Way and DW Highway, you know, more significantly that left turn lane coming southbound, extending that six hundred feet to the north, taking care of the left turns for the Saturday midday peak through the year 2032. Before I leave that statement, I should say that there's been an awful lot of discussion before the Planning Board about that 2032 Saturday midday peak, and you should realize that we typically look at the average weekday PM peak, maybe the average weekday AM peak, but we haven't looked at the Saturday midday peak, not because we really see that as the design standard for the corridor, but because we want to get a look at it while we're looking at the other things. To look at a Saturday midday peak, you've heard, that occurs for like half an hour a week or an hour a week, when it's adjusted upward for the peak month of the year, you're looking at a very conservative, very conservative, on top of the conservative stuff that you've heard about earlier, so you have to be careful about placing too much emphasis on the Saturday midday peak hour, especially out in 2032. Now, also, we've got the improvements at East Spitbrook Road and DW Highway, and then I've been listening in remotely to the Planning Board meeting, so I knew that the Planning Board is very concerned about the overall impacts on DW Highway and Spitbrook Road, you know, as a result of not only this development, but, you know, the existing conditions down there, and the opportunities for widening along DW Highway and Spitbrook Road, well, a lot, that ship has sailed. I mean, we're using all the real estate down there that we have for the turning lanes and the through lanes that we have on DW Highway and Spitbrook Road, in short of an eminent domain process, which I don't think the city has ever had the appetite for, we felt like we really needed to do something within the existing right-of-way, and we scoped out something with a consultant and a traffic signal contractor that we felt was appropriate to gain as much additional capacity as we possibly could during the peak periods, and streamline traffic as best we could, on DW Highway from the Mass Line up, all the way up to the north through Graham Drive, and on Spitbrook Road all the way from DW Highway out, past the turnpike through Terra Boulevard and beyond. So, we do think that when we asked for the sixty-seven thousand dollars, we didn't ask for it lightly, because that's a lot of money, but we felt like that was the best opportunity for us to really set ourselves up for building upon what we're already doing down there on DW Highway and Spitbrook Road, and setting us up, not just for this project, but for the future, so as applications come in and we need to build upon what we already have down there, it'll be much easier, because we have the traffic signal man, traffic signal management in place, and it's much easier to add on to it than it is to build anew. So, I don't know if you have any questions?
Yeah, I would just, I would just reiterate that, that sixty-seven thousand dollars, not just a number we picked out of the air, we do have a proposal from Traffic Engineering Consulting Firm to do the work that we've described, which is collect, collect the data, you know, and then implement revised timings, do analysis and implement revised timings based upon that, based upon the actual conditions, and to continue to monitor that for a one-year period and continue to refine and adjust as we go. So, it's not a, like I said, it's not made up, it's, we, we're making a real effort and improvement in contracting that work. That's our intention, should this go forward and that, that contribution be made.
Thank you.
Thanks. Questions? Mr. Peterson?
Yes, question for Mr. Husband. Do the DW Highway traffic improvements that you described, are they taking into account the two new supermarkets going in at the southern end of town?
Yeah, I heard your concern previously about the supermarkets, and we actually have like a three hundred and sixty degree camera in place at the Silver Road intersection. That intersection's been talked about a lot going into Webster Square there. Another feature of that overhead camera that you like to hear is the fact that we've got four traffic signal cameras overhead down there that are counting traffic in real time, so we're actually collecting traffic data as we speak at the intersection. We have, we added the traffic data modules to be able to do just what you're suggesting, so that'll be built into whatever we do.
Yeah, can I, can I respond to that a little bit?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Hudson.
Okay, sorry. So I believe the applicant previously indicated, they didn't specifically include that traffic as a separate number like they did with the BJ's traffic, but similar to the situation where Costco's changing sites, those, those stores are occurring in previously existing sites. The one was a Toys R Us, and now it's a grocery store. Another one was something else, and it's a grocery store. So, the same, same, you know, same analysis in that case, you know, I don't, whatever, whatever, there used to be traffic that's being offset, so what the additional is, I don't have specific numbers. The other thing is their traffic studies, which is typically done, includes a background growth rate, which is to count for any development that occurs over time, you know, any reasonable progression of development. I believe the rate was a half a percent over the period of projection here, so there are mechanisms, not specific, specifically addressed, but there are a number of items incorporated which account for that traffic.
Mr. Peterson?
One more follow-up?
Sure.
With the three hundred and sixty degree cameras and the new control modules that you described, will that provide more of an adaptive system? When traffic is busy in a certain way, it'll, it'll change, and then when things are different conditions, the lights will blink at a different rate?
Well, we're, we're still learning our traffic signal management system, but it does have some adaptive technologies built within that we, we've yet to tap into, yes.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Yep. Other questions by the board? Okay. Any other questions while we're in the hearing from the board, for staff? Okay, hearing none? I'm going to close the hearing on these three items, eight twenty-one dash zero zero two eight, zero zero two nine, and zero zero six two, and move into a public meeting. So, interested to hear some comments here. I'll provide a few of my own. I think, you know, we've, we've certainly spent a significant amount of time talking about traffic, and I feel like the due diligence here is pretty solid from the board. I mean, I've been on the board here for about a decade. I'm not sure we've actually done this level ever, so, and I can think of, maybe Mr. Varley can, but, so I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with where we're at. I, I fully understand we have different experts making different estimations, and I, I think that's not an abnormal situation for us, but it is our responsibility to make decisions with that, so. My own personal decision, you know, specific to the BJ's, the butters, you know, several of us were here when that site plan was proposed, and we definitely talked about that there would be more development down the road from that, from that, and that there had been proposed development, so my two cents is, there should be no surprise to the BJ's development that there was intended development at the end of Adventure Way. I mean, that's, there had been previously approved plans, and even when that plan was brought before us, we talked about, is this plan, understand, there's more development down the road. So, you know, it's not like this was in a, this is a surprise that this development is taking place, so. You know, that weaves into my kind of thinking here that, you know, it isn't like the development we're looking at now has come out of left field for the BJ's development. It's very much was part of the, the site plan consideration when they did that, so. Anyway, that's, that's my two cents on that. With regard to the U-turn discussions, I don't know, I think the city probably needs to study that some more. Maybe that's a future potential option of things, but I'm not sure I could make any kind of recommendations with that. I mean, I do think additional signage inside the Costco development is valuable. I think it works at the mall. I think it's easier to start telling people where to go than to try to change what they're doing. Seems like they're amenable to that. Seems like a pretty simple, pretty simple additional stipulation that we could just, you know, have them work with staff on that. That's, that's not a complicated one by any stretch, so. So that's kind of where I land on some of these things, so. Mr. Hurst?
I have a question, I think it's possibly, probably. When you look at a large site plan like this, or a conceptual plan rather, you're only improving subdivision and, you know, site plan for a portion of the site, entire site, is there any, any obligation down the road to prevent these other uses to go in there? Are we in any way sanctioning what's proposed elsewhere on the site by approving what we're proving? Because, because I look at the overall plan, if, you know, conceptual plan.
Yeah, I mean, my, my opinion is essentially no. We don't have to approve anything that's going forward from the additional, and to some extent, the majority of the larger developments, we, we don't get as much information on the potential future uses as what's in front of us. So the fact that we have kind of a master plan, if you will, for the adjacent parcels is, that seems reasonable, viable, and relatively well detailed, is, is a little bit in and above that, what we, almost, what we get most of the time.
So with our approval right now, we're not in any way sanctioning that?
No.
As somebody who accepts it down the road, because I'm a little concerned, the traffic for, you know, the train station, if that ever happens and that type of thing, could be pretty significant.
Agreed, but each one of those would have to stand on its own.
Totally separate site plan.
Totally separate.
Yeah, I mean, the subdivision is setting up, so eight twenty-one dash zero zero two eight is setting up the boundaries of the lots.
Yeah, the lots, right.
But, you know, there's, these are not like, you know, these are commercial subdivisions, so there has to be a site plan that could come with it to, to develop on it. You know, it's not like a residential one where we don't see the next step, if you will. It's, we, there's a requirement for the site plan, you know, to follow before there's any development.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Varley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first, I would just, I would really reiterate all the points that you made. You know, as to the traffic, well, first of all, I should say, I think to put this into context, I mean, I think this project has now been before us for about nine months. So to your point about sort of the level of diligence, and frankly, the opportunity for butters and, and, you know, other interested parties to comment, I think folks have had certainly sufficient time to do that. You know, as to traffic specifically, it seems to me that, that both the comments from Hoyle Tanner and the comments from Van S really go to methodology question in terms of, you know, trip distribution, et cetera, but I haven't seen anything in either of their comments that really go to, you know, what, what they would suggest as, you know, for example, different traffic mitigation measures. I didn't see anything that said, instead of doing X, they should be doing Y because that would mitigate the traffic impact, or this is what it mean, other than the, than the, the issue with BJ's of blocking the entrance, which I think the applicant has addressed to, I think, the best of their ability, I haven't seen anything specific that would say, this is the specific, you know, harm that would occur and any suggested mitigation. Further, I'd say we've heard direct testimony from the city staff that they feel that the mitigation measures that are proposed by the applicant are sufficient to address the impacts of the site. And again, I haven't heard anything, you know, to the contrary about, you know, additional or alternative mitigation measures being suggested by, you know, any butter or any other, you know, commenter. I also did want to talk briefly about one specific sort of technical point regarding the land use code, because it's come up multiple times in correspondence back and forth between the applicant and, and BJ's, and that is this issue of whether a conditional use permit is required for the use as a gas station. And, and the reason I want to address this is because I know we talked obviously almost entirely about traffic tonight, as I said, that, that's come up multiple times throughout the correspondence, and we've asked the question to staff, I know Mr. Sullivan isn't here tonight, but we've asked the question directly to Mr. Sullivan, and, you know, he has confirmed that the position of the city staff is that the mixed-use ordinance permits the Planning Board, under that authority, to alter the use requirement. So, to the extent that a use is conditional under the underlying zoning district, the mixed-use overlay ordinance permits the, the Planning Board to modify that conditional use provision. And I also understand that, that although we don't have something formally written from the legal staff of the city, that they confirm that they don't disagree with that view of staff, and then I think further, you know, even if, even if there's a disagreement about sort of the technical interpretation of that provision, I would just say, in my view, I think it's, it's a question of really a form over substance, and what I mean by that is, even if someone derisively argued that a conditional use permit, you know, should technically be required, it seems to me that the substance of the application is not going to change, meaning if we were inclined not to approve the subdivision and the site Meaning, if we were inclined not to approve the subdivision and the site plan, then we wouldn't be inclined presumably to, you know, to approve a conditional use permit. You know, and by the same token, if we are inclined to approve the subdivision and the site plan, I think we would similarly be inclined to approve the conditional use permit, because I think we've sufficiently evaluated the appropriateness of the use of a gas station on this parcel. So, I just wanted to address that, like I said, because I think there's been a fair amount of back and forth on it. So, that's my view on that. I think it's a, it's a technical form issue. I don't think it's an issue of substance. So, I did just want to put that on the record, and certainly, if anyone has a different view, please let me know.
Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, I did notice in the packet too, which I also wanted to bring up, just so it's discussed, is there was a a letter from Eastern Retail Properties, from, you know, hired, I guess, from BJ's, addressing the property value, and it suggests that the value of the BJ's property would be reduced by 25% as a result of the traffic from this, from this proposed project. But I don't see where it provides what the person's credentials were, and I don't see any supporting basis for that claim. It just notes it as an opinion, so. I just want to put that on the record. It's not that we haven't seen it or considered it, but I, to me, it's not compelling enough testimony.
I agree.
Other comments?
I'm glad, I'm glad to hear you say that about that. I'm curious where it came from.
Okay, Mr. Mead. Mr. Peterson?
Regarding A twenty-one, which is basically just defining the boundaries of all the properties and businesses down there, that's straightforward, and I could easily support that. And then, A twenty-one zero zero two nine, that is constructing a self-storage building, that is straightforward, and I could support that. The A twenty-one zero zero six two, which is basically build the Costco down there, that's the big enchilada here, and it's going to affect Nashua for like the foreseeable future of the rest of our lives. So, I'm thinking, I'd really like to take a good hard look at the 604-page report that arrived in my email today before I give a final vote on whether or not to approve the Costco building.
Okay. Mr. Varley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I do want to address that, because I, you know, Mr. Peterson's, you know, raising a good point about the, sort of, the materials we received at a late date. But, you know, that, that is why, you know, I wanted to get an understanding from the applicant as to, sort of, what was it that we had received, right? And I think the testimony we heard was that, that it was basically a consolidation of the information that had already been provided over the course of months by the applicant in other forms. We also heard extensive testimony from, you know, the applicant's traffic engineer tonight as to the specific questions we had at the last meeting, and in particular, the relevant updates, you know, to the report that were made. You know, I appreciate what you're saying in terms of, you know, having the opportunity to review, but I frankly just do not see that there's really any benefit to extending this longer. I think if you look at the historical correspondence from Van Ness and from legal counsel for BJ's, it's the same response over and over again. And so, if we were to, you know, postpone the decision further, I can virtually guarantee you that we're going to get the same response again. I don't think that, you know, taking another, you know, few weeks to review this is going to change their, you know, opinion about the traffic impacts, you know, one iota. And nor personally do I think it's going to change my views whatsoever. So, I appreciate what you're saying, but I just, I just don't see the benefit to delaying this further.
May I?
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Peterson.
At the last planning board meeting, I looked at the front page of the traffic report that was given to us. There were these extraordinarily large numbers of cars coming at Adventure Way, and the applicant said, oh, that's really not exactly what it's going to be, you know, like, well, what is it? And I didn't hear an answer on that tonight, so I'm hoping the 604-page report that came in the mail would clarify those huge traffic numbers that were predicted to go up Adventure Way. So, that's why I need time to review the paperwork.
Yeah, I mean, again, Mike, I understand what you're saying, but I do think the testimony we heard addressed exactly that issue. I mean, I understand that the traffic engineer maybe didn't refer to those specific numbers that you were talking about, but I think that the testimony we heard at the last meeting was that those were, those were sort of the entire universe, right? And they were not the specific trips. And if you, you know, the testimony tonight and the information in the, you know, the memo indicates very specifically the trips that they're estimating that are being generated for this site specifically. And there, you know, you can see right here, well, that's, sorry, that's phase two, but the phase one, you can see that, you know, they're talking about trips in the hundreds of cars. So, it's not anything remotely close to the, you know, the numbers you're referring to in, I think, some appendix, which made reference to, you know, you know, so many thousands of cars. So, I do think we've heard the specific testimony on that, and I don't think, I don't think anybody, including Van Ness or legal counsel BJ's or Hoyle Tanner, nobody's suggesting that it's anywhere close to those, those numbers that you were looking at.
Except, those were like on the front page of the report handed to us, so I'd like to see what the next report say. Maybe there's clarification on that, those numbers that were concerning. In my opinion, those numbers seemed, like you said, maybe they were the whole conglomerate of automobiles in that area, not just Adventure Way, even though the report said it was on Adventure Way. So, I'd like to get clarification from the report before I vote on it. Otherwise, I'm going to have to vote no, out of caution. I don't want my neighbors yelling at me every time they drive to South Nashua that they're stuck in traffic.
Are they already doing that?
Quite often.
Yeah, I mean, I'm on the same page as Adam. I really think we're in a repeat and repeat cycle here on the traffic side of the house. You know, I mean, I do have some expertise in how to read these things. I know Mr. Ballinger does as well. I know Mr. Hudson does as well. I think that the numbers seem consistent from the last couple of times around. It really just comes down to whether we agree with the distribution and whether we think that, you know, changes of, you know, 10%, 15%, one way or another, are enough for us to say yes or no to this whole development, really. So, I mean, you got to break it down. I mean, it's, we're not going to make the traffic go away. It is what it is, right? And you do need to weigh, as a board member, in your own brain, you know, is this development with its impact on traffic, you know, is it something you want or not? Does it fit in with other parts of our master plan and other requirements and other benefits? So, I mean, it's, we're definitely not going to get a development in that area that has zero traffic. I'm not sure we want one. I mean, that would essentially be a warehouse, you know, with, you know, that has storage with no trucks coming in and out, which, but, I don't, I don't know what kind of development you could have down there that isn't going to increase the traffic that's of any real value to the city, so. Mr. Peterson?
Well, as I was listening to you, you know, in my opinion, the traffic isn't, is what it is, because right now, most of that Costco traffic comes from Massachusetts or exit 36, comes and exits that way. Even if you live in North Nashua, you would exit and then take the entrance ramp north on the highway. Now, all that traffic is going to come up like, like four lights or five traffic lights all the way up to the corner of Spitbrook Road and DW Highway to get into the planned project. So, it's not the same. It's going to be a whole nother group of cars trying to get right through that intersection, and it's going to change everything.
Yeah, I don't disagree, but I think your option is no development on that site. You know, and it's a site that's, you know, it's a large parcel of land that is essentially doing nothing for the city of Nashua. You know, and, you know, improvements to the corridor, I mean, the city is working on them. We need them. There's no doubt about that. But, you know, I mean, I think there are a lot of benefits here, too. Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, I would just, I would reiterate some of what Senior Traffic Engineer Wayne Hussman said in terms of, you know, we can't lose perspective of what we're talking about, the phase two, with phase two Saturday in the future, because it's a very conservative, very conservative condition, and as the applicant has spoken to, you know, things could, things can change, you know. Phase two might include additional access points, which would change everything. So, I, you know, I've considered it. I think every point that's been raised has been addressed, maybe not to the satisfaction of the person who raised the point, but it at least has been considered and addressed, so. I believe we've been provided a lot of information, and there's no additional study or anything to that effect that I am longing for. Yeah, so, I mean, I think, I think you said it well, you know, we've, we've got a lot of information. We've been talking about it a long time, and so it just comes down to, you know, what's each board member's thought of it and consideration of it, given the whole scope of everything that's been discussed.
Mr. Varley?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I would just, this will be my final point, but I think, you know, Mr. Ennogosten, his closing remarks made reference to sort of a cost benefit analysis. And, you know, my personal view, you know, the benefits of this project, and Scott, I think you were alluding to this, is, you know, outweigh the costs, in my view, fairly significantly. And, you know, I, I also agree with, Mike, I mean, it is going to change the traffic that is there. There is going to be an impact. People are going to have to wait longer at that intersection, but it's a busy commercial corridor. There's a lot of traffic there now. There's going to continue to be a lot of traffic. That's part of the cost of having a commercial corridor like that. And, you know, people are traveling there because they want to get to those uses. And I think that's just, that's just part of the equation. Like Scott said, if we're going to have any meaningful development on this parcel, I think that's just part of it. And, and that's, you know, I think people understand that to some degree and accept that part of the cost of, you know, utilizing those services is having the, you know, having the traffic associated with it.
Yep, Mr. Peterson?
Well, we've discussed this quite a bit. Projects have been going on for a long time, nine months. There is no in-between answer. It's binary. Either we vote yes or we vote no. So, I'm going to give a less than binary answer, and I'm going to say yes with reservations. That's my, my vote.
Any other? Mr. Hirsch?
I think it sounds like a good project. It's a well-thought-through project. There is traffic. There's always going to be traffic there. Economically for the city, the rateables involved and all that are going to be significant tax revenues into the city. And it's developing an empty piece of land down there, which I can't think of better use. I mean, you don't want to put a warehouse distribution operation in down there. You could go a little trucking. I mean, so many different issues, wherever you should go to. I think this is probably the goodest idea.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mead?
I think having BJ's as being part of this process was very helpful, and that it creates a look at two different perspectives, and that was really helpful for me personally, as I kept reading documents after documents after documents. I really appreciate the city engineer's perspective, and that really was the most helpful traffic input I had tonight, was him saying, this is what we're doing. This is, this is going to work. There are inherent benefits to the applicant, and I feel concerned about that, you know, the train station and some of those kinds of things. But that's irrelevant in this case, really. That's too far outside of our purview to be able to look at that. And there should be benefits to him as he is the one making this investment in the city and in this property. So, I feel, especially having heard you, Mr. Chairman, say that this is one of the closest looks that you have seen in 10 years. I'm very happy to move forward.
Anyone else? Mr. Peterson?
One more comment. You mentioned, well, well, if you don't put the Costco there, what's going to happen? Well, it has sat fallow, if for the right word, for the last 30 years. However, conceivably, an office building with a train station there, that could be a little business hub at that location if somebody wanted to do it. But then again, we might be waiting around for another 30 years. So, there are other uses for that property, but they're not on the table. And they're not in the near future.
Yeah, I agree with you, Mike, and I, I think to some extent, getting development going there might actually be or improve the chances of an office building with a, with a, with a train station, because the site is starting to move, you know, and it's like a coefficient of friction. Until something moves there, none of the other stuff's going to be there. Ms. Harper?
Honestly, I was going to kind of say something along that same line, that there still is that opportunity to have multiple uses at the site that could end up, you know, being a great conglomerate of different services and businesses.
Mr. Peterson?
I think the coefficient of friction description really helped a lot.
Mr. Ballinger, anything on your end? Do you want to fasten up before?
I'd just like to say, I, I do not have the appetite or capacity for another three-hour discussion on this matter. I think it is, it's, that's the minimum time each time the project comes up. I think by and large, it's been time well spent. I couldn't possibly see tabling this or continuing to another meeting at this point, because I think we've seen what happens. It's going to be another submittal, another review letter, another response to the review letter. I personally think that I've seen them to make a decision this evening, so I would be in favor of putting that to a vote. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Varley?
I'll make a motion. I'm going to start with.
We're going to start with the subdivision, because the others can't work without it, yeah.
So, I'm going to make a motion to approve new business A twenty-one dash zero zero two eight subdivision. And that motion to approve is with the finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in subdivision at section 190 dash 138 G. And that is with a total of eight stipulations. And I'm going to save that stipulation on the.
Seventeen.
Oh, sorry. Yes, seventeen. I just want to know, I'm going to save that, that specific stipulation to be added for the site plan?
Yep.
A total of seventeen stipulations. Stipulation number one is a waiver request from section 190, 282A and B9, requiring existing conditions on the plan. That will read, is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation two is written in the staff report. Stipulation number three is also a wave request regarding zero frontage. That will read, is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulations four through eight is written in the staff report, and stipulations nine through seventeen is written in the staff report.
Okay. Staff, just a quick question. The dates on the The dates on the stipulation number eight and stipulation number thirteen, those in the staff report remain accurate?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, we have that motion by Mr. Marley to approve subdivision, new business plan eight twenty-one dash zero zero two eight with the stipulations as indicated or stated by Mr. Marley. Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board? All right, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Mark Meehan?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Next up, Mr. Marley, do you want to take?
Sure. So, next up, so I'm going to make a motion to approve new business number eight twenty-one dash zero zero two nine site plan. And again, that, that motion to approve is made with the finding that the site plan does meet the requirements outlined in NRO section one ninety dash one forty-six D. And that is with a total of twenty-five stipulations. And the first six of those are all waiver requests, one being from section one ninety dash two eighty-two A and B nine regarding existing conditions on the plan, reading "Is granted, will not be contrary." Stipulation number two being a waiver of section one ninety dash one ninety-eight regarding minimum parking, that will read "Is granted, will not be contrary." Stipulation number three being from a waiver of NRO section one ninety, one seventy-two requiring certain architectural treatments and materials, reading "Is granted, will not be contrary." Stipulation number four being for a waiver request of NRO section one ninety dash two fifteen B one and two, dealing with post-development peak flows, reading "Is granted, will not be contrary." Number five being a request for a waiver from section one ninety dash two, one ninety dash twenty-three B two, that will read "Is granted, will not be contrary." Number six, um... Hold on, just a moment.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's actually a waiver.
It's not a waiver. It's just, we just need, you just need to specify whether it is or is not.
So, I'm going to specify that it is not contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation under the mixed-use overlay district provisions, and then stipulations seven through twenty-five is written in the staff report.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Marley to approve new business site plan eight twenty-one dash zero zero two nine with the twenty-five stipulations as stated. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All right, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Mark Meehan?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Lastly, site plan eight twenty-one dash zero zero six two.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I will make a motion to approve new business number eight twenty-one dash zero zero six two site plan. And that will be with the finding that the site plan does meet the requirements outlined in section, NRO section one ninety dash one forty-six D. And that is with a total of, add one to that, a total of thirty-two stipulations. And again, the, the first six of those stipulations are waiver requests, one being from a waiver of section, NRO section, sorry, NRO section one ninety dash two seventy-nine EE, requiring existing conditions be shown, is granted, will not be contrary. Two, request for a waiver of section, of NRO section one ninety dash one four, eighty-four D one and two A with respect to interior landscape meetings, is granted, will not be contrary. Three, a waiver from NRO section one eighty dash two fifteen B one and two requiring storm under discharges to decrease, is granted, will not be contrary. Number four, waiver of NRO section one ninety dash one seventy-two regarding certain standard materials and designs, is granted, will not be contrary. Number five, request for a waiver of NRO section one ninety dash two oh nine A one regarding minimum and maximum width for driveways, is granted, will not be contrary. Number six, waiver of section, NRO section one ninety dash one ninety-eight for minimum parking, is granted, will not be contrary. And then with respect to stipulation number seven, the finding of the board is that the proposal is not contrary to the provisions of the mixed-use overlay district standards under the Land Use Code. Stipulations eight through thirty-one are to read as written in the staff report. And then I would add the new stipulation number thirty-two, and that stipulation would provide that the, the applicant will work with city staff to design appropriate signage as part of the off-site traffic improvements to indicate to, to traffic the existence of, of multiple entrances to the site.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Marley to approve new business case number eight twenty-one dash zero zero six two with the thirty-two stipulations as indicated. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion? All right, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Mark Meehan?
Yes.
That motion passes. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. You take away, thank you for all the time you have to be, you've seen a lot of stuff.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, just, you know, getting to the board here, it's ten thirty. We still have, by my count, one, two, three, four items on the agenda.
One, Mr. Chair?
Uh, there's one, but I think there's still...
Still leaves three.
I think it's three, right? Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, two, because two of them are, are, will be, will be...
Yeah, I mean, we've got two subdivision plans. I think we should make an effort at those, maybe see how far we get by eleven o'clock.
Yeah, just the one, one of the subdivision plans is included, it's a site plan as well.
Yeah, so there's really only two, two components here, right? Right? Does that make sense?
Yes, we've got the Nashville Mill Yard.
Yep.
And there's the Riverfront Landing.
Okay. What's the feeling of the board here?
The feeling of Mr. Ballinger is, I've been here for four hours, I need to...
Yeah, we can take a five-minute recess here. Let's do that for sure.
Second.
All right, so it's, we'll come back at ten thirty-five. But we are going to hear, next up, Nashville Mill Yard Associates eight twenty-one dash zero one eight eight. So, if you have anything to set up, we can go ahead with that.[1138.82]
Okay, alright, so next up on our agenda, we're gonna try to make some headway on the next couple few here. New Business Project 821-0188, this is a subdivision plan. This is Nashua Milliard Associates and Riverside Properties of Nashua Inc., owner's application and acceptance of proposed lot line relocation. Property is located in 1C and Pine Street. So with regard to jurisdiction, anybody from the board had a chance to take a look at this application? Want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction? Anybody? Mr. Varley?
I will make that motion that it is complete and ready for the board to accept jurisdiction.
Alright, so we have a motion to take jurisdiction, do we have a second? Second by Ms. Harper, any further discussion? Alright, let's get a quick roll vote on that from the board.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper, yes. Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Steve.
Steve, okay, and Mark Mean?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion passes, we have jurisdiction. So do we have somebody from the applicant, I think it's online, that wants to present?
Hi, my name is Mike Hammer, I'm with TF Moran, and I'm presenting this evening. And I'm trying, I'll try to be articulate after that long meeting we just had. Are you hearing me alright?
Yes, we can, yep.
Fantastic. So I'm here representing Nashua Milliard and Riverside Properties. They're looking to effect a lot line adjustment between lots 77-5 and 77-11. Bring up my screen here. Can you see that now?
Yes.
Fantastic. So lot 77-5 is a vacant lot with the exception of a radio antenna that's on it. Lot number, sorry, lot 77-11, I'm sorry, I apologize, this is a previous iteration of the drawing. I'll refer to it as the green lot, it's been mislabeled on this particular one. The green lot there is 77-11, it's a mixed-use commercial building. The yellow area that's identified between the blue and the green will be transferred from the blue to the green, it's about a half an acre. The existing 77-5, which is the radio antenna lot, contains about 4.7 acres. The resulting lot line adjustment will have a 4.4 acre. Lot 77-11, the green lot, will expand from 2.4 to 2.7 acres. There is no proposed development at this time. What has brought this about is Nashua Milliard is in negotiation with somebody else about acquiring the entirety of that particular tract of land. And Nashua Milliard Associates and Riverside Properties had been previous discussion to make an adjustment for potential unspecified development that may occur sometime between now and 35 years from now on lot 77-11. Frankly, I think this is as straightforward as it appears. We have asked for waivers to depicting physical features within 1,000 feet, the depiction of finished floor elevation, square footage of the mixed uses inside the existing building, and delineation of wetlands, because frankly, there are no proposed development here. We actually sought a partial waiver for the wetland delineation, we do show wetlands based on Nashua GIS, and in conversation with staff, they thought that that was a reasonable approach here. To get perhaps a little bit of visual of what things look like, this is the current configuration of lots in blue. I have to, sorry.
Yep, we're still seeing the original plan.
Oh, okay, let me, sorry, I'm gonna share, I gotta reshare my screen, I apologize. That's, I thought I was gonna be pretty sophisticated here. There we go. Hey, does that look like Google Earth?
Yeah, yeah, we can see it.
Great, thank you very much. So the blue represents the current configuration of lots. I'm gonna zoom this around so it's a little bit more interesting view. Oh, come on. And... That's the proposed reconfiguration of lots.
Okay.
I'm gonna keep it short and simple, that's pretty much it, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Alright, thank you for the presentation, anybody from the board have any questions on this? Essentially, some lot line adjustments. Alright, I'm not hearing any from the board. I will open it up to the audience, anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition, concern, favor, or have a question of the plan? Not seeing anybody, Linda?
Yep.
Can you stop sharing for a sec?
Absolutely.
Thanks, yep. I don't think we're seeing anybody, no?
I don't see anybody on the way.
Alright, I'll give the board one last opportunity, while Mr. Hudson? Yep?
Thank you, Mr. Hammer, can you just confirm that any easements that exist on the portion of land being basically transferred from one lot to the other, that they will persist with the, you know, to the new property owner?
Yes, they will, the only easement that has any bearing there is an existing drainage easement that extends to the edge of the Marimac River, and that's an easement in perpetuity, and the deed will reference that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions by the board? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing, move into the meeting. Seems like a pretty straightforward adjustment, we've all seen quite a few, or many of us that have been involved have seen quite a few adjustments down in these areas of the sort of development of the parkway and other things start coming, you know, completed or are still getting near the ends. Doesn't seem like anything out of the ordinary to me, anybody else have any comments? Anybody wanna make a motion? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve new business 821-0188 at Pine Street, finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in NRO 190-138G subject to the following 11 conditions, the first eight of which are waivers. Wave, condition number one, with respect to physical features shall read "is granted" and will not be contrary. Condition number two, with respect to floor elevation, waiver shall read "is granted" will not be contrary. Condition number three, with respect to mixed use and square footage, shall read "is granted" and will not be contrary. Condition number four, with respect to wetlands delineation, shall read "is granted" will not be contrary. Condition number five, with respect to a drainage report, shall read "is granted" and will not be contrary. Condition number six, with regard to parking, waiver shall read "is granted" will not be contrary. Condition number seven, waiver with respect to traffic report, shall read "is granted" will not be contrary. Condition number eight, request for waiver with respect to dimensions and square footage of all buildings and structures shall read "is granted" and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent. Condition number nine and 10, as written in the staff report, and on condition number 11, Mr. Chair, I apologize, I should have read ahead. It looks like we need a date to address comments from engineering staff.
September 3rd.
Thank you. Condition number 11, the date of Joe Mandola's letter shall read "September 3rd, 2021."
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ballinger, so we have that motion to approve 821-0188 with the stipulations as stated, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Harper, any further discussion? Alright, let's get a roll vote on that.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper, yes. Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch? Mark Mean?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes, thank you very much.
Thank you, members of the board.
Okay, next up, we'll take case 821-0193, and I think this would be in conjunction with new business site plan 821-0182. Let's take this with the board first, does anybody have a chance to take a look at 821-0193 Crimson Properties LLC owner? Application and acceptance of proposed subdivision plan and amendments to consolidate a lot via voluntary merger located at 1086 and L. West Hollis Street. Anybody had a chance to take a look at that, want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction?
So moved, Mr. Chair?
So motion to take jurisdiction, Ballinger, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Mean, any further discussion by the board? Alright, let's get a quick roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper, yes. Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch? Mark Mean?
Yes.
And that motion passes, now regarding the site plan, same owner, same location, new business 821-0182. Somebody had a chance to take a look at that, want us to take jurisdiction? Got a motion by Mr. Varley?
Sorry, I'll make that motion.
Okay, to take jurisdiction, a second, Mr. Ballinger?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? Okay, let's get a quick roll vote on that as well.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper, yes. Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Mark Mean?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes, alright, and you can go ahead and go right through both the subdivision and the site plan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, for the record, my name is Tom Zajak, I'm a civil engineer with Hayner Swanson, 3 Congress Street, here in Nashua. With me here tonight is Mr. Randy Turmel from Crimson Properties LLC, along with attorney Brad Westgate from Winer Bennett, the project attorney. We will try to be as brief as we can, I know it's getting late. We're here tonight, as you mentioned, seeking two approvals related to the previously approved seven-unit Applewood Estate project located off West Hollis Street. First, we're seeking amended site plan approval in order to incorporate in a budding lot via voluntary merger, and also add an additional single-family dwelling unit to make eight units total. So I'd just like to go through a brief presentation, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions. Linda, if you don't mind bringing up the plan? I'll get going while she's doing that. 1086 West Hollis Street, westerly portion of the city near the Hollis Town Line, R30 zone. The original approval was for, was upon lot 500, which is about a 4.26 acre site. The new lot, which we are proposing to bring in via voluntary merger, is in a budding lot, lot 223, which is .63 acres. These lots consolidated, as I mentioned, via voluntary merger, about 4.9 acres total. The site's abutted by West Hollis Street to the north, and existing single-family properties really on all sides. As I mentioned, the site was subject to a site plan approval in October of 2019 for a seven-unit, single-family detached dwelling unit project with access off of a new private road, which is now known as Braber and Drive. Braber and Drive is 28 feet wide and about 400 feet long, has a cul-de-sac at the end. The project was developed in accordance with the Conservation Subdivision Regulations, NRO 19040, and exceeded the minimum open space and conservation land requirements that are associated with that type of development. The lots are currently serviced by private septic, water from Penetra Water Works, propane gas, and underground electric and telecommunications services. If you've been by the site, it looks great, it's nearing completion. Six of the seven original lots are sold with the seven-unit sale hopefully coming up soon here. In terms of the proposed project, we're proposing to add an additional single-family dwelling unit in the southerly portion of the site, which again would make eight units total. The eighth unit would be located in what is currently a budding lot 223. Crimson Properties has recently purchased this lot with the intent of incorporating the land area into this project. Post-lot merger, the property will remain as a single lot with a condominium type of ownership. New driveway access provided to the now-existing Braber and Drive cul-de-sac. New landscaping and stormwater management improvements will be provided in keeping with the original approval and design intent. As was the case with the original site plan, remaining land outside of roads, units, and driveways will remain as open space and will be maintained under the rules of the Condominium Association. It is important to note that attorney Westgate and Mr. Turmel set up the original condominium documents in a way that contemplated this future incorporation of lot 223 along with an eight unit. All current unit owners that are out there today were aware and signed off on that possible situation. Mr. Turmel has also worked hard over the last month or so to meet with these unit owners, you know, to make them aware of the project and work with them to minimize their impacts on the location of the, of the new unit. The second application before the board tonight is a subdivision application related to the condominium. During our pre-application meeting with planning staff, we were informed that the, we were informed of this requirement. It was not something that was required as part of the original approval in 2019, but we understand that the city has been taking a harder look at this matter, and has determined that the condominium-related, that all condominium-related projects will require subdivision approval going forward under the current ordinance. Per staff guidance, we submitted a subdivision plan application, but no formal plan, as that's not required. The requested condominium information, such as the single-family dwelling units, as well as locations of common and limited common areas, was included in the amended site plan package. So in summary, we believe the applications are complete and conform with the applicable regulations. We are not requesting any waivers as part of these applications. I would like to spend just a second, staff always does such a good job going through the staff reports, preparing those. I wanted to respectfully make a couple suggestions or modifications to the conditions of approval. I'll start with the site plan staff report. Just want to note that condition number five, which is related to the fire department's review, I believe we received a review letter fairly recently, August 31st, indicating that they're all set with the project and have no objections. Similar with the health department, I believe their communication indicated that they had no objections. Number seven, I believe we've provided the updated condominium docs, or the amended condominium docs, to staff. That would be number seven, so if the board was so moved, they, we would request that those conditions be removed. Also, we just wanted to note that in...
Just a quick note, I think on our latest reports, those are six, seven, and eight, right? In our current?
That's what, yeah, that's what I had.
Just the numbering of those, six, seven, and eight.
So just related to fire, health, and then the submittal of the condominium?
Yeah, those are six, seven, and eight in ours, yep, okay.
We had worked with, with staff on modifying condition, well, I don't know if it's nine or 10, but about the final CO being the eighth unit, which we certainly appreciate. I just want to note that there's a sentence at the end about sidewalk construction, which we don't have for this project. We were granted a waiver originally, so it's possible that that last sentence or portion of it could be struck from that condition.
Yeah, that's number 10, there's something in there, yep, okay.
And then switching over to the subdivision staff report, I have three listed here in front of me. The second one is the condominium documents, again, again, I believe we've submitted the requirement there to staff, the draft documents. The first one, as it relates to the paper street access, I know a few of the board members were here two years ago when we went through this, there were a couple paper streets that were remnants of old subdivisions. There were some folks abutting that were here and wanted to hear more about them. We talked about how two of the three, we felt, provide a legal opinion, attorney Westgate gave a lengthy presentation about why we felt those were essentially extinguished. There is a paper street that we believe still exists, it's called Wallen Drive, that's located in the southerly part of the site. We believe there appears to be private access that would exist along that corridor. We're not making any changes to it, we're not making any improvements. Lot 223, which in theory could have access through there if it was its own buildable lot, is now obviously gaining access that way, so I would respectfully submit that we've cleared up any paper street concerns unless there's further concerns from the board or staff. Well...
Maybe you can comment on that?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on this, I mean, the conditions here are listed as Mark Propagula, you know, for the Nashville Fire Department. We want to make sure that the proper address is taken care of and completed. We want to make sure the condominium documents are finalized and reviewed by the city. Yes, we have the drafts and things along those lines, but we need to keep some of these in here to maintain, you know, a flow of... I do agree on condition nine, to eliminate the sidewalk portion on the site plan, but... And as for, the reason the stipulation one on the paper streets, we were hoping you would talk to, talk to us tonight and explain that those are all resolved, and since they are, that can be eliminated, okay? And I think that's...
So you think keeping the condo dock stuff doesn't hurt anything?
I don't think it hurts anything, yeah, okay, especially now since legal has been pushing to get things ahead of time, and we want to have things finalized and approved, so I don't think that would hurt.
Okay, got it. Any further comments?
No?
Oh, good, okay. Alright, so I will ask the board, any questions of the applicant regarding these two plans? The subdivision plan and the site plan? Amended site plan, I guess? Not seeing any, anybody in the audience wishing to speak? Go ahead and come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening again, my name is Pete Messini, I'm here with my wife Delilah, DeCosta Messini. We're butters to subdivision that Randy Turmel and Crimson Properties has developed. And we're quite pleased that we have seven new neighbors thus far, wonderful people. And he generally did a, an upstanding job in what he did to add to the city's residential inventory here. So I'd like to speak in favor of him combining the two lots and generating an eighth residence for somebody who can appreciate our city. You know, as it turns out, I'm sure he's gonna do a wonderful job on the last one, as well as the others he's done. And so I'm hoping that, I would just like one question I have, just for clarification.
Yep.
The paper streets that were mentioned earlier, the one still coming off of West Hollis Street? I see that if lot 500 is merged with the triangular-looking trapezoidal lot there, will that essentially be defunct in the way as having access to lot 500 and the interior? And will that paper street between the Sutherland residence and the BB residence then be divided between those two? Or are the only remaining abutters? That's, that's kind of a question for clarification I have.
Sure, I'm pretty sure the attorney that's with the applicant could, could comment on that for you.
Yeah, okay, and so like I mentioned, you know, Crimson Properties and Randy's done a really nice job with the, with the subdivision that debuts us, and we're just happy it was utilized in a residential capacity and not a daycare center, if you will, with a very traffic-demanding impact, you know? Much rather prefer eight families have their business and can appreciate that neighborhood, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the audience, or... Anybody else in the audience or online, speaking opposition concerned or have a question on the plan? All right, hearing none, I'll ask the applicant, maybe you can just clarify the paper street question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good evening. My name's Brad Westgate. I'm a lawyer with Weiner Bennett in Nashua, 111 Conker Street. Masks and hearing aids are quite a trick. I apologize. Relative to the paper street on Wallen Drive specifically, just to remind the board, and the board well knows, that paper streets are streets that were shown on plans but never accepted by the town. Many years ago, the law changed, make a long story short, with respect to these paper streets on this project, in particular Wallen Drive, the 20-year timeframe had passed, so the city's ability to accept the paper street was extinguished. But what remains are private rights of access, and I think Mr. Messini was talking about that. The, the Lot 223 that would be added to the condominium would still have that private right of access over the Wallen Drive paper street locus, but for practical purposes, if this is approved and we are able to integrate Lot 223 into the condominium, its access will come through Braber and Drive. It won't practically be necessary to use Wallen Drive for, for access if it's part of the condominium. The two property owners on West Hollis Street still theoretically have their rights of access too over that. And if you take a look at the plan, the property is in the back of Colonial, you see how it cul-de-sacs in on the right side of the plan? The use of Wallen Drive is now for practical purposes unnecessary for anybody off Colonial anymore. We had made that indication two years ago in the original application. In a nutshell, that's the story with the paper street.
Right.
Have to answer questions.
It doesn't really go away, but the practical usage of it is not there.
Right. It never goes away until all the theoretical uses of it, with those private rights, release those rights.
Right.
Otherwise, it's there in perpetuity.
Yeah, so they, so everybody who's connected to it would have to come together and formally, like, request that?
Well, theoretically, any one private owner can decide he wants to utilize it for access, but in practical terms, it never, hardly ever happens because you've already got access in one other fashion. Frankly, often the paper streets are that because they topographically weren't easy to build in the first place.
Yeah, okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the board? Are there any other questions for staff or in the air? Hearing none, I will go ahead and close the hearing and move into the meeting. Seems like a pretty straightforward addition to, you know, a site that we've already approved once. We have a butter that's, seems pretty positive, but as well, I don't see any, any reason I'm, I'm seeing that this wouldn't be a good idea, but welcome, any comments? Anybody? Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the McDermids of Nine Braber, who are willing to change their address to 11 Braber. I know we've had other cases and we've had people not willing to do that, which creates some complication with addressing, so I just wanted to note that for the record and, and extend a thanks to them for being willing to do that.
Yep, okay, great. Any other comments or in the meeting? Okay. Anybody who want to make a motion? Mr. Riley?
Mr. Chair, first, as to new business project 821-0193 subdivision, I would make a motion to approve the plan, and that motion would be with a finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in site plan in R O section 190-146D. And that would have two stipulations. The original stipulation number one regarding the paper streets will be removed, that having, that issue having been satisfactorily addressed by the applicant. And former, or current stipulations two and three will be renumbered one and two, and read as written in the staff report.
Okay, so we have that motion to approve new business 821-0193 with the two stipulations stated by Mr. Riley. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion? Can we get a roll vote on that?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott LeClaire?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Maggie Herbert?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Mark Mean?
Yes.
That motion passes regarding site plan. Mr. Riley?
Mr. Chair, yes, I would make a motion to approve new business project 821-0182 site plan. Again, that would be with a finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in the site plan in R O section 190-146D. And, let's see, that will be with a total of ten stipulations. So the first stipulation is a waiver request from NRO section 190-279EE regarding existing conditions being shown on the plan. That will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulations two through nine show read as written in the staff report. Sorry, stipulation 10 will be revised but will be retained, but will be revised to remove the last sentence regarding sidewalk construction. And stipulation number 11 will read as written in the staff report, so sorry, a total of 11 stipulations.
Yep, okay.
Clarification, the first waiver is not needed. They provided all those conditions.
Okay.
You can eliminate that.
Okay, I will, I will amend my motion to remove stipulation number one, the waiver request not being necessary, two through 11 being renumbered one through 10, and the stipulation current 10, new 9, will, as indicated, remove the last sentence regarding sidewalk construction.
Okay, so we have that motion to approve by Mr. Riley for new business 821-0182 site plan with the 10 stipulations as stated. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board? Okay, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott LeClaire?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Maggie Herbert?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Mark Mean?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, I believe we only have one more item, which is just an amendment. It feels like we should just power through it. Do we have somebody online for it?
Yes, he's online.
Okay, I was gonna say.
Yeah, so let's, let's hit it here. So the next up is new business site plan 821-0189 Riverfront Landing LLC, application accepted proposed site plan amendment in R 1975 to construct an in-ground pool, pool house and patio, properties located in Nine Bancroft Street. So do we have a motion as to whether to take jurisdiction on this matter? Mr. Hirsch? A second? Mr. Ballinger? Any further discussion? Okay, let's get a roll vote on the jurisdiction, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott LeClaire?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Maggie Herbert?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Mark Mean?
Yes.
And that motion passes, we have jurisdiction. So do we have somebody online that wants to present this application?
Yes, good evening. Members of the board, my name is Tom Burns. I'm a senior project manager with TF Marion. On, on the call this evening on behalf of Riverfront Landing LLC applicants for this project, if I can, I'll share my screen. And hopefully you're seeing, you should see a color, color presentation plan.
Yep.
So the application before you is to amend the site plan for the Riverfront Landing Apartments. This is a, the apartment complex at Nine Bancroft Street. What the, the applicant is looking to do is to modify an existing landscaped island that's within the internal parking area between the apartment buildings by adding an in-ground swimming pool with a, an accompanying patio area and a poolhouse to go with it as a, an additional amenity for the residents of the apartments. So as you'll see it on the plan before you, what we're looking to do is replace a portion of that, of that grassed and, grassed and, grassed island area with the, with the pool and patio. There would be a small poolhouse, so it housed, housed the bathroom facility as well as the mechanicals for the pool itself. And then the patio, the existing patio area that has the gas grills and a fire pit now would be modified to still have those amenities, but they would just be relocated on it. And then the island would be landscaped around those features. Existing drainage within that area, presently that, that island drains to a couple of leech and catch basins. One of those catch basins would be removed as part of this project, and we are proposing to replace it with a series of nylon blast drains and perforated pipe that goes around that island to replicate the, the drainage patterns as they exist today. There is no anticipated traffic impacts to this because again, it's, it's an amenity for the existing residents there. Access to the facility would be through a key fob that's provided to those residents that would only work in the given hours of operation for the pool, as well as for the, the patio area that has the fire pit and the grills. And again, this would, this would be just strictly an amenity for the residents. Other than that, it's, it's a relatively straightforward application for it. It'll be a nice feature for these, you know, for the folks living there, and we're looking for the board's support on it this evening. Happy to answer any questions that you may have on the project.
Okay, thanks. Anybody from the board have any questions regarding this site plan application? Doesn't sound like it. And there's nobody here in the audience at City Hall, but is there anybody online that has any comment, question regarding the application from the public? Hearing none. Give the board one last opportunity to ask any questions of the applicants during the hearing. Ms. Harper?
Just a quick question. What, what's currently in this area where it's being built? Is it, is it parking or?
No, it's currently, it's, it's a grassed area. It's partially grassed, so the area where the pool and the patio itself are, it is, is grassed with a paved walkway that goes from, if you can see the, the crosswalk areas on the rendering, on the, the presentation plan, there's a walkway that kind of cuts on an angle, on a diagonal, from one walkway, from one crosswalk to the other, through that area. And so that's what the pool would replace. The area where the fire pit and the patio that's shown on this, that, that exists today, it's, they're porous pavers, and we would be doing that as well. We would just be shifting the location of the, the fire pit and the grills within that area.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions by the board? Okay, I'm, go ahead and enclose the hearing, move to the meeting. Seems like pretty straightforward, not a lot of impact, really anybody but the residents. Yeah, do we, any further discussion, comments in the meeting here?
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
On the original staff report that was mailed out to you?
Yep.
Stipulation number three actually got broken into two, a three and a four. In the amended one that you received in your folder this evening?
Yeah.
It shows that correctly that there are only seven stipulations.
Okay, that's in the latest one? So. So, any additional info?
Right, so you're saying three, which refers to the engineering comments from Joe Mandola, and then the, there's a four that says shall be addressed to satisfaction of the public works, you're saying that one should go?
Well, that should go, no, should still be in there, but it should be all together. Then three, four should be net together. Should be, yes, merged, thank you. It's, it's correct in the new one that you received this evening.
Okay, yeah, I don't-
Yeah, no, we got the hard copy.
Got it, okay.
Tom, can you stop sharing your screen?
Sure.
All right, does somebody want to make a motion? Mr. Riley?
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve new business project 821-0189 site plan. And that's with a finding that, that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in site plan in R O section 190-146D with a total of seven stipulations. The first of those is a waiver request from NRO section 190-279EE regarding showing existing conditions on the plan. That will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation, and then stipulations two through seven as written in the staff report.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Riley to approve 821-0189. The stipulations is stated. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? Okay, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott LeClaire?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Maggie Herbert?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Mark Mean?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
All right, I think the only thing left on our agenda is a review of the tentative agenda for proposals of regional impact. That was one listed in our, in our packet. Does anybody have a chance, it was from the technical review meeting on September 7th? Anybody have a chance to take a look at that? Want to make a motion, whether there's any items of regional, potential regional impact?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that there are no projects of regional impact based on the technical review meeting of September 7th, 2021.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Ballinger, there are no proposals of regional impact on the tentative agenda. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? Okay, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott LeClaire?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Maggie Herbert?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Mark Mean?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Okay, the planning board members for Historic District Commission, I'm not sure we've had a discussion still on who might want to be considered for that.
Okay, so we can push that out to the October 7th meeting?
Yeah, let's move that forward, and then maybe, maybe if I can, I'll talk with you or Scott or Matt about, maybe we should send an email around for people interested, you know?
Don't all email us at once.
And, and, well, I think if there is something about what the role is and, and what, you know, what the purpose of the commission is and that kind of thing, that might be helpful as well.
The commitment to.
Yeah, the commitment. Yeah, so could you put a little email together to send around to us?
Do you have a description?
Yeah, that would be great, and then people can think about it, and whoever doesn't show up will volunteer on point. And then just the last reminder is reminder of the 23rd, we do have the meeting, and that's here, right, for the master plan?
That'll be September 23rd, correct here in the auditorium, I believe, at, at 7:00. We'll send around an email.
Yeah, and that's for formal review of decision-making on the master plan. So do go on-site to imagine Nashua, take a look at the, I think you have emails from, from planning on that, so take a look at that.
Mr. Chair, just a point on the 821-0177. Could we postpone that to a date certain, October 7th?
Yeah, that's fine. Do we, do we need to make a motion on that? Because I don't think the person asked to be removed.
I think they withdrew, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
They did withdraw with the understanding that try to be placed on the next meeting.
Yeah.
It'll be heard October 7th.
That's fine.
We didn't accept jurisdiction.
Yeah, that way you don't have to re-notify butters.
That's fine, yep. Okay. All right, anything further? All right, welcome to super-long meeting, Mr. Mean, for his first one.
Yes, welcome.
I feel like that always happens, actually. It's happened to me, too.
Oh, hazing.
Trial by decade ago. Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn? Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, but-
Valerian.
We'll need a second on that, let's just get a roll vote, please.
Oh. Uh, Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott LeClaire?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Mark Mean?
Yes.
And we are adjourned at 11:20. Thank you.
Could I just confirm who made the motion to adjourn?